I'm so happy today to have Max Steele back here again, and we are doing some six month rankings.
Yeah.
How excited are you to do this?
I'm, I've been accused of being really nice to the council, like very constructive in my criticism. I don't know that you're gonna get that today.
You've been accused of being nice?
I've been accused of being nice.
I feel like I can't agree with that. Last time, I think both of us were a little bit.
Yeah.
As mean as we got during certain points, I do think that was a pretty tepid kind of approach. But that was also early on, and now we've seen some glimpses of this council.
Yeah, and we've seen the masks drop, right? We've seen, I mean, even the most careful and diplomatic counselors are starting to come out swinging. Yeah, like the night nice is done. So yeah, we're getting to see them how they really are. And yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had some opinions change a little bit, and then I've had some opinions get much stronger in the same direction they were already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I think, and just for everyone watching, I have not seen his rankings, but I think you'll be surprised at mine, maybe a little bit. I, there's been some shifts, nothing like
Sure.
insane, but I think you'll be surprised.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I've got some criteria that I have added.
I was as well. Yeah, I was, I was trying to also do, you know, like policy and then like behavior, that kind of criteria.
Yeah.
I don't know the hell that lines up with yours.
No, no, I, yeah, policy, behavior, and then there's, I'm adding weight to how dangerous I think that they actually. So like if you, you could be super incompetent and just a total whack job, but you're gonna end up in the middle of the pack because I'm just not that threatened by like what you could really do. And then some of the more, like some of the cleverer.
Yeah.
They're gonna get a nastier ranking because just simply I think they're more destructive and more capable of destruction.
Right. I was gonna, and I was gonna specify you're talking dangerous to Portland, like just for as a whole.
Yeah, yeah, they're dangerous to the cohesion of the council, dangerous to, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Community.
Community, just the, the general vibe of the idea that we're trying to work together and build something as opposed to just fractious. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna go through a couple little notes here before we get started. I'm just gonna hit this. We're back again with the six month rankings. I don't know how hyped up this is gonna be, but there's a lot of stuff to get through here.
There's so much.
I was actually gonna maybe let you start with this. Like, I just wanted your thoughts on the whole kind of governance in general. Like, has anything changed in your mind up to this point since we talked last time about the setup of the council, the format of it? What would you like to see? I have a couple of things on here that I was gonna mention, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think there's an acknowledgement that it isn't really working. It's not a total dumpster fire, but even the, even the, like, the progressive caucus, the clique of six, are, you know, talking about bringing in outside consultants to figure out why the council doesn't gel, right? I, I think it was Willamette Week dropped a story just this morning, and like, I think it was Sophie Peel, her review of the budget process was, I mean, this is, these are not her words, but this is what I would have written, like a whole lot of yapping for not a lot of movement.
Right.
Right? Like.
And that was, yeah, EPG also echoed that in the meeting of like, we have a lot of stuff to get through. Everyone's talking for.
Yeah.
I don't think she said this exactly, but in my head, it was, everyone was like, kind of grandstanding, talking for like 10, 20 minutes each and.
When, when you stress test something, the weaknesses are gonna show, and a lot of these are weaknesses, you and I, and many much smarter people than, than the two of us have said, you know, 12 members doesn't make sense. It's an even number that's a big problem. It's a large number. That's a problem. There's, there's a lot of just, just flaws in the way that we set this up, and, and those are fixable with amendments to the charter.
Right.
But currently, you know.
It's nothing in the near future.
No, 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 no. And that's, I've been having a lot of people ask me, so how do we fix the charter, right? And, and there are, there are mechanisms for fixing the charter, but, you know, they don't, they don't happen in that chamber. Yeah.
Okay, you'd, yeah, you'd actually, you probably know more than me. Is that all voter approved?
Yeah, so changes to the charter, you can get like, because somebody in the neighborhood asked me, they were like, how many signatures will we have to get to change that charter? I was like, oh, a ton, but it doesn't matter. You need seven counselors to vote to propose an amendment, but they can't, they can't pass the amendment. They pass the amendment to the voter.
Right. So they pass something to, to ask for a ballot measure.
Yeah, for example, the majority of Portlanders thought that the mayor had tie breaking power because that's what they told us.
Yeah, that was that kind of a big point that they're figuring out and.
We're hemming it on on that a little bit. He hasn't so far, and that would be something where you could, you know, save your, I don't know, counselor Loretta Smith, and you refill really strongly about that. You could theoretically, my understanding of the charter is you could put forward an amendment, get six counselors to back it, kick that to the city, and the amendment says something like, this is the exact definition of tie breaking power. This is what a tie is, you know, here is when the mayor gets to weigh in. You could codify that really clearly instead of just going off like city attorney interpretation.
Yeah, there is a lot of interpretation going on and.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the reasons I was kind of asking about that, because I had on here, like I mentioned to you a couple of minutes ago, I was watching a couple Seattle City Council meetings, and it's just interesting that they have, I believe, nine counselors.
Oh, an odd number. Interesting.
I could be one off, but, but it's smaller than ours, and I was just like, being a much bigger city, why, it just seems like a more appropriate council size.
Austin's council, smaller.
And, and that was one of my on here. I was, I was suggesting, instead of three per district, two, maybe even one. I know that one would be tiny, but well, I think two is a better.
And that got floated around a lot, right? Of like, why don't we just have like seven or nine districts with one per? I mean, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it, this is, yeah, yeah. I, though, that's like a big change. That would be a huge.
Yeah.
So I like, I think kind of what I was referring to is a little more structural changes that don't require like redistricting, which, I mean, again, everything's on the table. It's a democracy. We can, we can, we can change the stuff. We changed it once. I know people are hesitant to change it again, but there's some, there's some real flaws with, with how this thing is set up. There's some real flaws with, like you said, a lot of what's happening is interpretations, and we've got, you know, we moved away from this, how, how did people categorize it? It was like the commissioner system where, you know, the commissioners had their own individual little fiefdoms.
Bureaus.
Yeah, and now we've moved away from that, but we heard this throughout the budget process, the bureaus are not being very forthcoming with their budget information. They're not like.
Yeah.
It does, it feels like it's bureaus versus.
There's a lot of friction.
There's a lot of friction, and if a bureau likes a particular counselor, and we've straight up seen, they will work with that counselor to get them all the right numbers, and they will, I'm like, I'm prepared to accuse bureau directors of absolutely like slow walking numbers, losing numbers, shuffling numbers around. Yeah.
And I think it goes without saying to you, like, they're always gonna be self-interested in their own, you know, like, they're always gonna be protective of that.
Sure.
But yeah, what you're saying is absolutely true, and I.
Yeah, as a bureau director, you want more money for your bureau. You want more money for your people, more benefits for your people. You want to be the biggest.
Promoting your, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's like, that's normal. But, you know, you've got a legislative body that's trying to approve a budget that pertains to your bureau. They want to make a change, and you're slow walking figures to them, so they can't.
Yeah, and there, and there was a lot of that. There was a lot of numbers that were kind of off, numbers that were delayed, you know, they're just asking, the counselors are just asking for data most of the time, and it's, that should be pretty straightforward.
So I want to bring up Austin again. Go, go to Austin's city budget website. You know how Portland has like the Portland Open Data Project? You can look up property lines. It's really cool. Even if nobody, if you've never gone to Portland's like Open Data Project, it's.
Yeah, I don't know if you're talking about Portland Maps, if that's involved, but.
That Portland Maps is involved.
It's kind of an outstanding GIS.
It's great. So Austin, the city of Austin, Texas, has that for their budget.
Okay.
You can like drill, it's so nice. You can drill down, it's interactive. You go, oh, what's my public safety budget? How's that partitioned out? How much of the general fund is that? Oh, wait, which are the, oh, what are we spending to fire? Well, what, well, how, why are we spending that much on fire? Click through. We need that very badly, and I think Counselor Zimmerman has not brought up Austin exactly, but he has said, this has gotta be the last time we do a budget process with this budget. This budget is a nightmare.
And it, yeah, I guess to be fair to everyone, it was, you know, you know, I wrote on here, it's the, it's the first process of going through this cycle.
Sure.
With the new thing, and you could, I, I would frame that as like, it's, it's just the difficulty of, we have a state law that it's gotta be by, I think, July 1st for all governments to have, you know, budget approval. So there was kind of a crunch in that aspect, but I'm gonna sound like a broken record here, but I wrote this big chunk on here again. I basically started the last review we did with this of like, like whenever I watch the Governance Committee meetings, this is when I really start to get just upset about this stuff of like, because last time I talked, you know, we had years of kind of sunsetting the old system. We had a whole transition team, and I understand that the counselors weren't involved with that, but I always just think, you know, after the November election, these guys had arguably two months to figure out what they're gonna do, their policy, look at the charter, figure out how to interact in that charter, and I get that, like, it's hard to, certain things you're not gonna know until you're there in that seat.
Sure.
But I just have a way higher expectation than, like, we'll talk about it later, and you mentioned it already, the stuff that Tiffany's doing with bringing in a consultant to reset.
Yeah.
The kind of idea of the council.
We're already resetting, yeah.
And that's gonna cost money, of course, and.
And Avalos has said over and over again, and she's not wrong. It's just, she's, you know, we're figuring out how to do this as we go. This is a new thing. We heard that a lot for the first, you know, our first two episodes, we'd, we'd mentioned that, where, you know, month one, month three, we're still hearing that, but like, you remember during the pandemic, the phrase supply chain issues? You can only hear that so many times before you go, okay, but, but I need an O-ring for the fitting in my kitchen sink, and supply chain issues isn't cutting it for me anymore. Like, I get that that's real, and also you're gonna have pissed off customers.
Like, at what point?
Yeah.
A year in, are we gonna be still?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not pivoted, we're not, well, you know, it's just those supply chain issues, like, oh, it's just a new form of government. Like, yeah, I get it. I get it.
Yeah.
But.
And it's, you know, I think about this a lot, too, of like, it could literally get to the point where, hey, we're up for reelection and District Three and Four, and they're still kind of kicking that excuse around.
Yeah, and I think that's gonna, that, that's gonna brutalize them. I think, I think District Three and District Four are in a unique opportunity. I think they're gonna have a rough time in this election. I think all of them, even the ones that I like, are gonna have a rough time because it just, nothing has gelled, and it's not gonna gel in the next year. It might get better. After we're outside the budget, it might get better.
We'll see how the next budget next year goes.
Yeah, but, but I, it's, the cracks are now visible, and I think people aren't gonna forget. The, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it, for sure. It's not gelling, and there are cracks, for sure.
Very, very visible.
And I was gonna say really quick, go, I don't know, I feel like you and I probably had this sorted out. Like, I had somebody call me a couple of months ago from Seattle, asking about the blocks in the council, and I was trying to explain to them what that was, but Sophie's basically summed it up, and I'll put a link here to her thing.
Yeah.
But that's basically what I expected with these blocks. It's like, now we have this concrete thing of like, you got the moderate block, and then you got the hard left block.
Yeah.
And that's always what it's gonna be buttoning up against, and there's kind of people in the middle, more like Steve and Steve Novick and EPG, or people like that, they're kind of more flexible and much, you know, but, but check out that link if, if you want to learn more about the blocks, and obviously, we'll talk about it here.
Yeah, I might, and I don't have an issue with, with Sophie's reporting on that. I think that's great. The issue is, is Avalos is like really big about proportional representation, right? This was the pitch that we were sold, is that when we get three counselors from four districts, and rank choice voting, and single transferable voting, which basically didn't work, the single transferable part, you know, we're gonna get, what we were sort of told to expect, although not in these words, is that we were gonna get like one-third liberals, one-third progressives, one-third socialists or communists, right? Because that's kind of what Portland feels like.
Not so much of like a two-party.
No, we were, we were supposed to be getting a lot of different voices, and, you know, we were kind of told like, this is the opportunity for the John Walkers from your district to get on the board, or maybe there's even like, I don't know, maybe there's like one conservative city council or libertarian. Something wild stuff, right? Because all you need to do is get 25%, and that number is not accurate, but that's fine. We'll get to that. We'll get to that. But, you know, we were told, so the, the elevator pitch is that under a first past the post-election, up to 49% of a city could be disenfranchised or feel disenfranchised because they didn't get their pick. 51, you know, if it's a really close election, almost half of people didn't get their choice, and under this system, 75% of people would be on, represented on that council, and only 25% of Portland. But that's not what we're seeing. Half of Portland is not socialist. That's just not an accurate reading of what Portland is. We have a lot of socialists and a lot of communists and a lot of anarchists, and they might muster.
A third or something?
No, I think less, even if I'm like in my, in my most horrible nightmares, there's still like a fifth of the city, right? They really are.
As far as population.
Yeah. And so if, you know, if you shrink down for registered voters, and then you shrink down for people who actually vote, you, you might get to a quarter, maybe. How are they half of the, that doesn't, the, the number, the math doesn't math, right?
Yeah.
And so this is where the proportional representation argument falls apart. It's, this is, you voted on a package that you thought the mayor had a tie breaking vote. So far, he hasn't. You voted on a package that you thought that you were getting proportional representation. Eh, proportional representation's a little iffy. There's a lot of like, we're not really getting what we were sold.
Not being delivered, yeah.
Yeah, it's, and, and again, maybe you can write it off as like, oh, well, it's a, it's a new form of government. There are hiccups, and it was weird that the single transferable voting didn't work better, you know, it only moved one election. It moved Eli and Eric's numbers a little bit, like, some of these things are odd. Yeah, it is strange that District Three has two DSA members.
Yeah.
Like, I think your district is insane.
Yeah, it is.
But two-thirds of you are not DSA members.
Yeah. Well, now, I was gonna ask, like, you made me think, like, is it, since you know so much about that, the DSA, and is, is that like a, to me, that'd be a total intentional national strategy, and I look at, I'm watching the New York mayor's race of like, looking at jurisdictions where, where rank choice is prominent, and then just DSA just targeting that, and just saying, we're gonna get in here, even if it's not proportional to the population of.
Yeah.
Is that a strategy?
Yes. Yes, I'm, 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 I used to be sold on ranked choice voting. I am very skeptical of it now, because, well, okay, let's, let's not look at District Three. District Three is a nightmare scenario, but let's look at District One. So District One had horrible voter turnout, and this is where rank choice gets really sketchy, right? Because you have a significant portion of the district that doesn't turn out to vote. And then in District One, you had an even smaller percentage of the district who bothered to write in city counselors because they weren't properly educated on the issues. They weren't reached out to appropriately, the groups who were supposed to do, for example, black voter outreach in East Portland. I have been told by numerous sources, just kind of printed up flyers and dropped them off at community centers, and then they tabled at political events. But non-voters or unstable voters, people who don't vote very regularly, they're not going to political events. There, there was very little door knocking.
That's an opt-in.
Yeah, that's an opt-in thing. So you're not doing, you're not enfranchising working class immigrant, black voting communities by doing that.
Aside from dropping off a piece of paper.
Exactly. So what you're gonna end up with in a small turnout district like that is the most passionate, most motivated voters are gonna show up. So when, when Candace Avalos says, I've got a 25% constituency, she doesn't.
Yeah.
If I am being charitable, 10% of registered voters in District One voted for her. That is, if I'm being charitable, and I am allowing for single transferable votes to be added. But 7.5% of D1 is like, that's our girl.
And it's, it's one of those things to me, too, is like, I, I didn't really get grasped that until now. I've gone back and look at the 30 rounds or whatever.
Yeah.
And then you kind of see, oh, yeah, initially, you only got six or 7,000 votes, and then you get these others transferred in.
Like.
Which even at 10,000, that's not a lot of people.
It's not a lot of people.
Major city.
So I just had, I mean, I've, I've joked and I've, you know, tossed this around. I'm running next year.
Yeah, no, I heard that. I thought it was cool.
And I took a meeting, you know, and, and these, these potential donors and potential like door knockers and fundraiser, whatever, and they were like, well, you know, what do we need to win? And I was like, it's a non-presidential year. I need 8,000 votes.
Right.
And these people's jaws like hit the floor. They're like, eight, 8,000?
It sounds like nothing.
It's, it is nothing. It sounds like nothing because it's nothing. It's 8,000 people. I, you know, that's what I need to get on this. That's absurd.
That's why, I'm curious.
Absurd.
I'm curious your take on this, too, because I've been telling people, like, if you want to win a city council district in Portland, like we're just talking about, I would say half, probably a little more than half of that is just building a successful social media feed.
Yes.
Which is sad to say.
So that's.
As long as those people are local and, you know, have visibility on your platform. And that's a sad thing, like, that's, to me, like, that's a bad, that's a very big negative.
That's an indictment, that's an indictment of the system. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, so that explains your district, then. Because Tiffany Koyama Lane had the money behind her, right? She had Working Families Party. She had the DSA, she had a ton of ads, ton of money. They had to make her a household name, and they've succeeded in doing that. Good for, I mean, good job, Tiffany Koyama Lane. Like, that was a successful campaign. A little dishonest, but a very successful campaign. Angelita Murillo needed, I mean, she got 13,000, but like, she would have gotten on with, with eight or nine. She's got a huge social media following. She, she fires people up. She's got like a hot energy that comes off of her.
Coming in, she had that long before.
I, you know, you have set up a system where, you know, sort of Trumpy or people are gonna have an easier time getting on. They don't need to defeat a bunch of opponents in a primary. They don't need to take over a political party. They just need like a cohort of ludicrously dedicated people. There's an old thing, if you're like a freelance artist, it's like a piece of wisdom. It's like, you don't need a million fans. You just need a thousand really dedicated readers or whatever it is. If you've got a thousand dedicated people, these are the people that will tell people about your stuff, you know.
Right.
You can kind of move.
They're promoting for you.
Yeah, you can move mountains with a thousand dedicated people instead of appealing broadly, and like, that works in freelance writing. It works in art. It works for me in Substack. I, you know, I'm not reaching everybody in the city, but, but I'm doing all right. I don't really want it to work that way to get on city council. That should be.
Yeah.
You should need to be pretty broadly appealing.
Well, now, I was gonna say, maybe, I don't know if this makes sense to you and to everyone, but one way I think about, too, is like, you know, in my, in District Three, in my district, we're talking about, like, we were just saying, Angelita had a huge decent turnout, but like, that's comparative to Steve, who just had his nameability from previous elections. And that's like kind of equally weighted, and, and it just seems kind of fucked up to me of like, that's like, she's got a huge social media following, and that is on par and equivalent with a guy who's been in office and has that nameability.
That's it.
Name recognition. That's what I'm saying of like, if you can just build that campaign, that's equivalent, that social media is equivalent to like what he put years of life into.
That's it. That's it exactly. That's it exactly. I mean, again, love or hate Steve Novick, love or hate Olivia Clark.
Yeah, and I'm not even saying anything about policy.
Steve Novick and Olivia Clark are, they would have gotten onto city council in a popular vote, no ranked choice, no single transferable. We would have Steve Novick and Olivia Clark sitting on that council.
Household names.
Their household names.
Already.
We probably would have had, you know, Candace Avalos, right? Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I agree.
But I will say for, for sure, I'd lay like money down on the table. We would have gotten Novick and Clark because they are traditional politicians, and I mean, I couldn't be really happier with Olivia. So like, I, that's who I want. I, you know, I've, I've said that my, my great regret about Olivia is that she's a little boring.
Yeah.
She's boring in all the best ways. She's not a boring human being. It's just her policies very like brass tacks, core services.
Yeah.
You know, environmental stuff, social justice.
Lighten people up on social media.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's, it's the sort of stuff where like, you could be forgiven for not knowing she's your city counselor, and that's like, that's great. That's so, that means she's doing an incredible job.
Yeah. Okay. Let me see here. I think I was just gonna, I promise, we are getting, we're almost to the rankings.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of I wanted to say about this. Yeah, I'm just gonna play a couple clips here of, I just want people to understand the kind of backdrop of this budget session, and I was gonna say, there is one final budget meeting next week, and personally, I don't think it's gonna really move. I think all the amendments have come out. Like, we kind of know the policy positions of many of these counselors, and the one coming up this week, which this episode will probably be out already, but requires an emergency amendment and a nine-vote threshold. So I just don't think that unless something completely world-changing in Portland happens between now and then, and they introduce an emergency amendment, I don't think anything's gonna change, because like I said, a few minutes ago, the, the budget's gotta be approved by July.
Yeah.
So we're like, they've got like 12 days or so to.
I trust their ability to take it down to the wire with silly nonsense, but I, but I, to, to your point, I don't expect a.
Not like a rogue amendment.
There's not like a midnight police, you know, yeah, that's not gonna.
And I'm also saying that, yeah, based on the ones they've already tried to get through that have failed and, or been successful or whatever. But I'm just gonna play a couple highlights here of the first police defunding 12 AM vote, and then the second what I'm calling midnight antics, which happened a couple of weeks later. We'll just play that real quick.
I would suggest that we close here so that we can get through things on time. And I will give you all my word that my intention is, as long as I'm not overridden by your colleagues, to start with parks when we pick this back up on the 11th.
No, I think we can hustle through this, and we can get to the only parks amendment that the entire community is waiting for.
I don't think there's just one that the entire community is waiting for. I think there are a lot.
That's an uncrease, which is more exciting.
We need to keep moving here.
So you're trying to close this out? You're trying to close it out?
Closes it for tonight.
We are at 11:23. We have the right to be here till midnight. We have one balanced amendment, 2 million from police to 2 million to parks. We don't have to close this meeting right now at all.
Withdraw the motion and yield to Counselor Avalos. I still motion it, then. I already had the floor and I yielded.
He had the floor and yielded, Counselor Zimmerman.
I would like to make a motion to move Avalos one. I know we are at the end here, but this feels like an important vote. This is the uncrease to the police. Uncrease is credit to Counselor Canal. The last thing I'll say is, I would like to thank Counselor Murillo. We are teaming up on this, so Avalos one and Murillo one are one.
I am not interested in cutting police budgets to fund, fund parks maintenance until we have looked at other options.
This is not a cut to police. I really hope that we can just get this done. Come on, Novick. Come on, come on.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I want to hear from my District One counselors also. How will you explain this to your constituents? I'm curious how they're gonna explain this to their constituents who overwhelmingly, like all of my constituents I talked to in storefronts, who will be very, very disappointed if we take this action at this time.
I've never seen a city council or county commission in my life be so giddy to cut public safety. This is, this is not a laughing matter. It's 11:30 at night, and I know that folks want to have fun, but this is serious stuff.
People in District One, they believe that police don't come quick enough. They believe that we should have twice the number of police that we have, but we can't start to defund the police.
This council will make a big, big mistake that you will regret if we go ahead and put this through.
This is not a cut. I vote aye.
This is absolutely a false choice. I vote no.
Mayor, you got played. They knew that this was gonna happen. You got played. I vote no.
Madam President, I, I made that motion yesterday. May I have the floor to amend that motion?
Please go right ahead.
Withdraw the, the motion and yield to Counselor Koyama Lane.
Thank you. I motion to move Koyama Lane to three. It will take 90 seconds. To clarify, it is 216,000. That is not a new general fund ask. It's the realignment.
Counselor.
Going recreational cannabis tax revenue.
Second.
We all want to vote, and you're not letting us do it, and you.
I'm not sure that we can recognize it, that you can turn that over to another counselor who I have not recognized.
I did that on May 21st. We have precedent on it.
We sure do, and I was told after the fact that we did it wrong.
Okay, point of order. I think we should just move this ahead because it's gonna take 90 seconds to pass it because it's literally just a technical adjustment for Vision Zero that needed to happen earlier and was rushed through. Let's just get it done.
I very much did not want to do this. I asked you multiple times. I believe there are times to not be, be rigid, and this was a choice for it to be like this. I would like to just move this through.
Multiple of our colleagues asked me if there were time for additional things. Multiple of our colleagues had other things they wanted on the table. One set of people are trying at the last minute to move something through, and nobody else has that opportunity.
So this is twice where gamesmanship has happened the last time, and as Ms. Loretta said, believe them when they show you who they are. There are so many amendments across this entire dais who were put down, did not get heard out of a general courtesy. This is discourteous.
You want to say anything about this stuff?
I mean, it's, 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 it's ugly.
Yeah.
So I'm like a real. I, I just get like a bee in my bonnet about the sort of bullying, like, if you.
Well, my thing is like, shouldn't, shouldn't a whole new government system that we're trying to make better, shouldn't that avoid stuff like this? Like, isn't that the whole point of like?
Oh, the constant grandstanding? No.
No, I just mean that they're like, hey, it's midnight. Guess what? We got a surprise thing coming through. Like to me, that's just old school bullshit politics of like.
Yeah, okay, that's it. Okay. Yeah. To your point, this new form of government is not solving that problem. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's not solving that problem. In fact, it, it might be exacerbating it. I don't know that I'm prepared to say that, but, but yeah.
I would agree with that.
But yeah, it, it, it.
There's a lot of leeway with the rules.
There's just a tiresome, um, I think the only benefit, like I walked away from both of those scenarios thinking, wow, you'd have to be a moron to not see what the DSA is doing.
Yeah.
Right?
They're pretty clear after.
They are spiteful, childish, manipulative. I, this is where my internal war over Ilana Pertilgini as president happens because on the one hand, I respect a lot of what she's trying to do and what she's trying to do is not easy. And on the other hand, like, you're the teacher of a class and you got a kid in the back of the class who's constantly hitting the other kids in the back of the head with rubber bands. And when they turn around and freak out, he's like, what? I wasn't doing nothing. You know you have a problem. You have a troubled student in that class, like,
And she does.
Do something about it.
I will, I'll mention it when I get to her, but she does give them a pass, I think, too much with that kind of stuff.
And, and we have seen in some interviews, the, the sort of post-mortem interviews with, with Willamette Week, like she's, she's starting to.
Get better.
She's getting, I think she's getting sick of it. Like, I think she really, really wanted to be part of that, like, maybe in her head and I don't know, I don't know her heart. I don't know, but like,
Part of the block.
Seven person progressive and will do like good progressive stuff. And I think she's, I, I think she is realizing like, oh no.
Yeah.
No, 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 there is no playing with those kids.
Yeah. And, and I was gonna mention it and when I get to her, but I think it's probably better now to mention it of like, I was like thinking this week, like, thank God she is the council president.
Oh, yeah.
If we were, if, I can't even imagine if we were stuck with, like Tiffany, I know she's the VP, but.
Avalos, Avalos is president?
Oh my God, we would be in a completely different position.
Man. Oh, I.
Just the whole etiquette of the council, the rules, what's allowed.
Yeah.
You would have seen way more of this midnight type of shit.
And, and the just nasty jabs that Angelita Mario gets away with, like, being like five foot nothing does not make your disrespect, like,
Yeah.
Oh, oh, because she couldn't overpower you in a boxing match? She's allowed, I, it's wild that kind of just, just like, huh, you know, can you just give me, I need two minutes to get the votes together to take two million from, like.
Yeah. Put that, I can put that.
Yeah.
It will take me one minute to get the votes I need to move two million from police into parks. So I think we can get that done.
It is like, you know, I have a lot to say about her when I get to her regarding that. But yeah, uh, I just wanted to put that, put that into kind of frame for everyone. That's kind of where we're at and that's kind of the tone and the attitude of these first two crazy twelve hour budget sessions was, these kind of antics and, and the interesting thing, like when you were just saying about EPG kind of trying to regulate is I think you're right about like, she may have been on the fence initially, but when you see that first midnight vote, it's like she, I think, understands that a lot of her voters and a lot of every council districts voters were probably over fifty and were probably in bed by that point and just have no idea what's going on. They don't, they wouldn't approve of that kind of BS.
No, that needs to be aired out.
Yeah. And I think that's what I'm talking about when I say like, that's just like old school, like when people complain about
Yeah.
National Congress. That's the kind of shit you'd expect from that. Like, we don't want to create that here.
I walked out of that first, they had the midnight cowboy nonsense police thing. I walked out of that thinking, man, I was, I've been too soft on EPG. She really let me down. And I had people push back and say, you know, cause I wrote up my summary of it and, and people said you were too hard on her. It's a really hard job. You're, you're being too rough on her. And then what we saw this last week with the second big round of this. You know what?
It was a big, yeah.
You know what? Maybe I am being too hard on EPG. I, I, she, she barked.
Yeah.
She, she snapped.
She did.
But in a professional way, in a just like, listen, this is what our constituents expect from us. They are not getting the quality of work that they are looking for. I am very frustrated. And it's, and she said without saying exactly, the thing that I've been saying about the DSA, which is that you were putting forward feelings over figures. You're putting forward these good sounding, good feeling resolutions that sound, they sound progressive and fluffy and nice and good. The math doesn't math.
And then literally the next day you find out, oh shit.
Now we're in the hole on money again because the math wasn't done correctly. And so she's like, now you put me in this position where I'm voting like against LGBTQ stuff.
Right.
Because I have to, because it's too recklessly put together.
It was like a bomb of a, and we'll talk about that amendment and stuff, but.
Yeah, but so, so I, we'll get into the rankings, but EPG may, uh, may get some love from me today.
Yeah, the, the only thing I was gonna say about that was like, it was, it was an interesting, you know, we talked about a second ago, but it was an interesting shift from that first midnight vote to the second one. And to me, it was really a, I mean, it was a relief, first of all, personally, but it was more of just like a reality check, I think, for for these blocks and understanding that like, you had all your success, you blew all your success on this midnight.
Yeah.
Two million dollar funding. And then we really saw in the second session, the kind of balance that we're gonna be living with. Uh, so I just wanted to say that, I don't know, it, it kind of clarified for me at least that this seven vote block is not gonna be successful on all these amendments.
No.
And it absolutely was not.
It was absolutely, yeah. So haha, back in my old Antifa days, one of the things that we would do when we were vetting somebody to join a somewhat secret clandestine organization, not Rose City Antifa, just a different organization that was adjacent, uh, is we would take that person to the Nickel Arcade. The, yeah, the Avalon, the Avalon.
Avalon, yeah.
The Avalon, yeah, the Avalon Wonderland. And the reason that we would do that is because, and I did this later on, on like first and second dates. Uh, you want to see somebody lose? You want to see somebody win? You want to see somebody compete against other people? You just, you want to see how this person behaves. And an arcade is like a perfect microcosm.
And it's low cost.
It's low cost. It's very, but you know, and it puts them at ease because they don't think of it as a test.
Right.
Absolutely testing them. I would, they tested me this way. They took me to Babylon.
You get all those reactions and the.
You see somebody cheer for themselves. You play, uh, you know, air, air hockey with somebody. You get to see like, how, how are they when they're aggressive? How are they when they're winning? How are they, et cetera? Uh, and I think that first night we saw like how the DSA acts when they win.
Yeah.
And they act like assholes. I mean, just absolute assholes. Like they're terrible, terrible winners.
I'll put it all in that comp that you guys saw a few minutes ago, but yeah, it, it, it was amazing that whole, I don't know what it was, twenty minutes when they went around the dais explaining, like they knew they were gonna pass that thing.
Yeah.
And, and they were so amped up about it and, and to just see the range of emotions, like you're saying, it was a, it was something.
It was, it was something. And then as they started to lose, cause they over, they got out over their skis and as the budget process went on, they started losing stuff. And I mean, you were seeing people almost bursting into tears.
Yeah, yeah.
On, so, and I don't mean that to mock them. I'm just saying like, you kind of saw both extremes.
Right. You got to see the highs and the lows.
Do not like losing and they love winning way too much, way, way, like too much. Like it's, like it's professional wrestling, not like it's balancing a budget that affects all of our lives.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot of, yeah, so.
Yeah. And it is, yeah, I think you're totally right. It was, that's one of the reasons why we're recording now is like, I felt like I saw the whole range of what we're gonna see from these guys.
Oh, yeah. Then, no, we, we got, if you.
You got the highs and the lows.
You got to see who these people were.
Yeah.
So now this six month eval, I think this is the, this is, I mean, well, well, you know, we'll do a final grade, I guess, is the, but, but like as they leave or whatever office, but, um, but this is them. I think we've, we've got, we've.
We have an understanding of who they are.
Yes, we have the measure of them.
Um, okay. I couldn't remember who started last time, but I was gonna let you go first if you want to go first.
Okay, so here's the, all right.
So, and again, for people who don't know last time, we're starting at the top.
Starting at the top.
We're starting at number one.
And, and this is, so again, it's still so scientific. My, my process is, you know, very, very refined. I just want to say ahead of time that, you know, I have added those other factors. I've had, added how, how dangerous, how, how effective, whatever you want to say.
You got to, you have an actual criteria.
And like, Eric, I love you. I do, but, but, um, but number one is it's not even close. It's Dan Ryan. It is Dan Ryan.
Yeah.
I, I, I would, I could not be happier with him. And that is not to take away from what I saw from Eric and Olivia. And like my councillors did great. Dan just stuck to his guns. He planted his feet. I can think of like literally one vote. What? And I don't even want to get into the, because it wasn't even on the budget. It was like before the budget here. There was like something.
You didn't like.
Yeah, I was like, I wouldn't have gone that way, but that's, that's okay. That's okay. And I get why he did and it wa, it wasn't grandstanding and it wasn't being a coward. Um, he was very specifically not a coward throughout this entire process. Th- this is the nastiest stuff I've ever heard about Dan Ryan is that he's, he doesn't have teeth.
Yeah.
He had teeth. He had metal. It was, I, I was so impressed by him and I agreed on every single one of his budget votes. That was a full agree. You know, yeah. I, I don't, I don't know what more I can say. I just, I, I was, I was grabbing drinks in somebody's backyard the other day. This was a person who was very anti-Dan Ryan, very, very anti-Dan. And they were like, sometimes, you know, history comes a-knocking and you answer. And they said, we may be seeing that from Dan. We may be seeing Dan finally really plant his feet and say, it doesn't matter if genderless rodent on blue sky calls you an asshole.
Is like famous. They've been on Twitter. They've been on Twitter for years too.
But it doesn't matter if they think you're an asshole. Like it does, it's, it's immaterial. It's okay that they do.
Dan's able to look past, just move past that.
And I'm not saying that he necessarily always hemmed and hawed because he was worried about perception, but I, I just feels like he's figuring out how to plant his feet and realize the same thing that, that Angelita Mario has realized, which is that I don't need to make a majority of you happy. I need to make my constituents happy. Dan is figuring out whose constituents are. His constituents are people who, uh, have very similar lifestyles to me, not particularly wealthy, small business owners, people who are struggling, people who love this city. Dan fucking Ryan.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, this is funny because I swear to God, you guys, we don't share this beforehand, but, but I also picked Dan. And like, this is maybe not as substantial as a reason as you, but I wanted to, because last time I had Eric and I don't know. I mean, I, I completely agree with you. I just felt like he's more committed to that lane. And like you said, he's been really going hard on the small business, local business thing. That's kind of his thing now.
So good.
You know, I did write on here, I thought it was interesting. He didn't really have any amendments and I, I think maybe that's an interesting just play on his part of like, like he had a couple of budget notes.
He had a budget note. He had a couple of really small things, but about small businesses that were very, or very, very, very uncontroversial, right? The stuff that, we don't remember them because they just sort of snuck through because it was like twelve oh votes on everything he put forward because it was common sense stuff.
And maybe, and I was just, you know, maybe that's the, the way to go because like we were just saying twenty minutes ago or whatever. This was a crunched, extremely crunched budget session. And most people, myself included, uh, I agreed with the mayor's budget. I was like, I think this is a.
So did Dan Ryan.
Yeah. So that's what, maybe that was intentional on his part of like, I'm just gonna see what other amendments come through, put my stamp on it if I agree, but for the most part, I'm gonna let this process just go.
Yeah.
And disagree with anything that I disagree with, but.
I think Dan Ryan successfully took the pulse of Portland. I think that he held his finger up to the wind. He saw which direction it was blowing.
Yeah.
It wasn't, so it was something that he could easily live with. He didn't love every single thing about the mayor's budget. He's been really clear on that in interviews. Ilana Pertilgini mentioned just how bloated that process was because some people wouldn't stop yapping. Dan Ryan didn't yap.
Yeah, that's true. He was not.
You want to talk about a guy like, mm.
I bet, and you know, God, I wish somebody, me and you would be the only ones that would ever do this, but if somebody like clocked the time for each. I, I would bet that Angelita was number one or two. Samir was probably up there. There's certain people that are just like, if they're voting, even if they're voting or not, they're gonna talk for five minutes.
Yeah, much love to Loretta.
And then they'll go around and they'll come up and talk again. Yeah, Loretta is guilty of that for sure.
Yeah, for sure. And I mean, much love to Loretta, but, but a lot of that, but Dan Ryan understood the assignment. Like it on a core, like, yeah, so can't say enough about it.
I don't know how much of that also you can attribute to being part of the old system and being part of the new system and just understanding the complexities of both.
Yes.
But yeah, I agree. Like he, it just seems like he's actually focused on twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in Portland. There's no pet policy that he's already trying to ram through, uh, even if it's not an amendment.
No.
He's just focused on like, let's get this thing working. Let's, you know, make people feel
Yeah.
like we're in a, a body that's capable. Well, and he, and he doesn't have like, he's also one of the only ones on here that doesn't really do like outbursts. Like he'll say something like on the midnight vote, he had a little thing. But he wasn't like emotionally unregulated. He was very stern about what he wanted and what he was upset about. And I guess, yeah, it's kind of like we were saying a few, he, he wasn't, he doesn't really grandstand. He just speaks when it's, it's appropriate and yeah, very calculated, you know?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to say, I'm trying to figure out how I want to respond to that. I agree totally. So he was, um, hmm. He was very upset.
Yeah.
He was very upset.
Him and Eric both.
I know. And, 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 and he, so I'm, to understand, like, looking at his response in that clip, that's a man who understands that getting in his feelings and having an outburst is so much less productive than saying the thing that he knows to be true. And I had mad respect for him in that moment. Like I am, I am, I am definitely like just a little bit like fallen in love with this dude. He, he, he's, because he just, he feels like Portland. He feels like the Portland that I want to live in. When I look at Dan Ryan, that's the silly twenty ten, whatever. The, yeah, the Portland that drew the, the country's attention to us. Just a silly, ridiculous little city that's just beautiful.
Yeah.
And like I, you know, I'm being like a little, maybe a little too saccharine about it, but I just like, that's, that's Dan Ryan. That's Dan Ryan in a, in a nutshell. So, yeah, yeah. Uh, love you, Dan.
Uh, you made me think two things really quick. I want to say, um, he, he did in that midnight, I think he was like the only one who said, I earned every minute of this little speech that I'm doing right now. And he was actually that aware to, you know, whereas most people just drone on and on and on and on about what there's, you know? So that, and then also, um, he, I'll clip this if I can find it. I'm pretty sure I clipped it a long time ago, but he, he also, like we were saying, he's so committed to like his lane that there was a moment, this was not in the budget process, but it was at a meeting a while back where uh, Candace had, Candace Avalos had just kind of out of nowhere brought up this like, hey, let's tax the rich kind of thing. Which is, you know, insane, insanely popular slogan. It's like saying people love puppy dogs or something.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
End world hunger. He, in that moment pushed back and said, well, what do you mean exactly like by that? Because we've lost a lot of high earning people.
Councillor Avalos, I just wanted to ask you a question earlier. You use the terminology, um, when you meet with Mayor Wilson, you ask him what the proposals are for taxing the rich. But I just want to know your, I just want to know the definition of ta, of rich.
I don't have the number on the top of my head, but I will give you the data that I have. Um, I think that we need to be looking at various corporations and looking at higher income earners. Obviously, yeah, the definition, I can't give you an exact definition.
Portland is known as the second highest tax city for that category. Um, but number one is New York City.
And, and she just completely clapped. She had no, it was just a slogan. There was no actual numbers of a threshold of income or anything.
Yeah.
She was just like kind of flustered and said like, oh, I'll get back to you and.
Yeah, I.
But even the way, like first of all, pushing back, that's brave.
Yes.
That's hard to do in Portland. And also he again was, he, it wasn't an outburst. He was just like, I really want to know, like, what do you mean when you say that, you know?
So just, so what?
That, that's a hard to find, that kind of bravery in Portland.
So building on that, then there, there was, this is not directly related to the budget. And I got to write up a piece about this because the drama around the Portland children's levy and specifically the equity stuff around the children's levy is wild, but Dan Ryan, you know, he, he, he said, he's like, hey, have you, you guys devastated that we have less money this year to feed children with? And you're e- even more devastated that we have less money to feed black and brown children with the twenty percent across the board haircut that that like, that's because you've chased off our tax base.
Yeah.
So.
And he does, he says this all the time.
Yes.
And it's, and it does seem like it falls on deaf ears to.
Yeah, I know. Well, yeah, it's, it's heard by some of us and he's a hundred percent right.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm at all the.
Oh, no, for sure. Yeah. They just ignore it because it's just, oh, he's a business guy yapping about business, but biz, you tax the businesses to pay for the, and, and, and he's not even being like a brutal capitalist like I am. He's like, he is the squishy guy who's like, I want to feed these children, but the only mechanism we have to do that
Yeah.
is to have a large enough tax base.
Yeah, there is just. Saying in a very kind way, you guys, we do need businesses in Portland. Do you understand that?
Yes. So, so, okay. And enough wonderful things about the, the, the beautiful, handsome, charming Dan Ryan.
But I think, yeah, let's go to number two. I think I know who your number two is probably gonna be.
Yeah, it's Eric Zimmerman. It's fine. Like I love Eric. I thought he was great. I just, I just, I have to, I had to throw love at Dan. Um, no, Eric's, Eric's been phenomenal. Uh, he's been phenomenal in my district. Uh, he's been phenomenal in my district. He's, he's, uh, he's had some pretty brave nos, some no votes where it's like on principle, you need to vote no on that crap. Just, just stupid.
Some of those where he's like one or two only no.
Yeah, he did get tricked on that. What is it? Green nine, the.
He was part of, yeah.
Yeah, which, you know, we'll talk about it. We all do stupid things. It's fine. Um, he, you know, he got wrapped up in that. There were a couple of things he voted for. Whatever. It's fine. I, I like Eric quite a bit and he was stalwart throughout that whole process. I, my ranking of Dan above him is no criticism.
Yeah.
Of Eric.
It's always close between.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, he did. He did fantastically. Um, I, I was outraged that, um, parks. Colluded as much as they did to try to paint instead of working with him. And I mean, again, this is back to slow walking figures. This is back to sandbagging.
That's the one example I think of is they were kind of stonewalling, not providing real numbers and.
I say this, and I'm just for a second going to put on my hat as somebody who, who is the treasurer of a friends of parks group. I work with parks a lot. I am passionate about our parks. I love our parks. I'm going to have an event coming up surrounding the idea of saving parks. Uh. I just don't see a road forward for Portland parks under its current leadership. I just don't. I think that it has.
It's gotta be a change of the order.
Yeah, it has some substantial flaws. It's unsustainably funded and it's, it's run, even if it's not intentionally, it's run very corruptly.
Yeah.
Uh, and the fact that they colluded the way that they did to make it seem like, again, it was feelings over figures. They came out there and said, oh, our tree canopy. Our tree canopy will die. Our tree canopy will shrink, et cetera, et cetera. And you saw something that this occurred numerous times and I'm, I'm sick of it. Zimmerman brought out his chart.
Yeah.
His graph.
I'll put a thing about it, but you're talking about the one about tree canopy?
Yes. And so under the time that this department of urban forestry has been ballooning, the tree canopy has been shrinking.
Yeah. Mitch Green's decline.
Yeah. Mitch Green called him out on that. Oh, I'm an economist. You can't prove causation there. Sure. You can't. You, you can't prove causation. That is just a correlation. Um, but then the DSA, Candace Avalos, Angelita Mario, throughout that whole process. Did the same thing, which is pointing out a very interesting correlation. An economist, Dr. Mitch Green sat in his chair on his hands and didn't say boo about the fact that, yeah, it's kind of.
So it's a selective.
It's a very selective outrage. Oh, it's like councillor Zimmerman, you're playing fast and loose with figures.
I gotta call you on this graph, but our graphs are all good. Like.
Yeah. And, and again, Zimmerman didn't claim causation there. It, it's, it's a rhetorical trick. I use that. Everybody uses that rhetorical.
Well, I was going to say, I, you know, I understand Mitch's point when he was saying that, but it is also like, you can't, you can't also deny that it has gone down.
It has gone down.
We're not saying anything about causation, but.
But if, but if there's no causal link, then cutting it, you can't extrapolate that cutting it will make it worse.
Right.
You can't necessarily extrapolate it'll make it better, but, but I, I think this is, if they're, you know, if they are not the last bastion holding under a tree canopy, and I really don't think that they are. Anyway, it was, I thought it was pretty disgusting how parks rallied. A, a lot of people I really respect. Although they did accidentally out some parks members who are, or, or parks employees who are DSA members. You could tell because they'd come for it and they would read off their phone. And it would be the exact same talking.
Wearing a red shirt.
Yeah. And the 92 unfunded or un, unfilled, totally funded police positions that they've still after five years not managed to like. They would just read their script and it was the same DSA script. And I was like, oh, yeah, cool. So I know who in parks is in the DSA now. Yeah.
Well, no, I'm glad you brought that up too, because, um, just to give people context, my whole. The way I was looking at that and listening to that was like, you know, this all kind of stems, at least from my perspective, from that Willand Week Sophie Peel article, going after tree regulation.
Yes.
And I thought it was really smart of Eric to basically target that and say, this is going to be my amendment area. Where we can save money because these guys have been documented as to providing a service that's not even functional, arguably incredibly broken. And people are insanely frustrated with it.
Yeah.
It's bloated. There's a lot of money involved. So it made sense to me that he would go after that. But like you were saying, it, it got into this kind of tangled mess of a thing with the bureau and.
And it was just feelings. It was, you're going after the trees. This is what they do. No, no one's going after the trees.
And, and Max, I can't tell you how much, I, I, I had a whole thing in here about just how much it frustrates me that this whole budget session basically turned into parks.
Parks, parks, park, 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 parks.
And like you said, you love parks. I love parks.
No one's trying to cut the parks.
You're totally involved in all these park things.
Yeah.
But I just, as a human being, I'm like, what are we doing here? It's 2025. We have 12 goddamn people on a council. We all love parks. Can we just move on to the other issues? Like we get it, parks.
This, well, yeah, I mean, right now across the river, there is a giant protest against Trump, uh, in a city where.
There's no opposition.
Who disagrees with you. I mean, like March, you have a right, you have a first amendment right to protest if you want to protest, but like there is just this vibe of like.
Yeah. And maybe I get, are you saying also like, they just in, in this even budget process, there's got to be a boogeyman and that is like the anti park people.
Yeah, they're, oh, they're coming after the parks. And then if you wouldn't mind dropping in the clip of Steve Novick on the campaign trail, like.
Oh, yeah. The, the, you're talking about the one in the Zoom.
I do think that since we are not able to maintain our parks, that they're degrading. At a certain point, we need to acknowledge that we can't maintain them all. Um, and that probably means at some point, unless we can find a new source of money, closing some of them.
Yeah. He was, he was on, this was, this was a, a campaign trail, a Zoom meeting, and he fully acknowledged like, actually there are huge structural problems with parks. We can't afford the number of parks we have. So we either need to find alternative funding sources, which is something that you've seen from Dan Ryan and Olivia Clark and Eric Zimmerman, looking for alternative funding sources. Looking at bringing back business, private business partnerships. Dan Ryan's going after trying to get, uh, uh, national tennis money into our tennis program. Ah, chef's kiss. Love it. Like they, they are trying to solve these problems and they're getting categorized by the ACLU and the DSA is like. These people love cops so much that they would burn all the parks to the ground and it.
What's, you know, what's funny? I just thought of this as like, in a way, like you could make an argument that actually, you know, I believe it was Mitch's amendment, but stuff like raiding the golf fund. Or maybe that was Angelita's.
Oh, oh, we're, oh, we're going to talk about the golf funds.
Like that's anti parks. Like I don't know.
I, okay, we'll get there.
Cause I think you hit on a great point, which is like. I'll get to my number two in a second. Uh, it, it's just like, these parks are so expensive.
Yes.
And it's like, I'm saying this, I walk through the, the park by my house almost every single day and I love it. But it's like, there's gotta be a way to make this financially sustainable.
Yes.
We don't need to be doing levies all the time.
Or.
Which are risky and, um, but I just don't understand how it costs that much. That's what I don't get.
I know. I, I am, we're going to get to the golf, we're going to get to the golf fund. Uh, my father loves golf. I loathe golf so much.
Yeah. And I'm, I don't like golf.
These monsters have turned me into a golf defender and we will get there.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of probably just did half of my thing there, but, but yeah, Eric is my number two. You know, outside of the budget stuff, Eric has been at the forefront of the SDC waiver.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, to unlock housing and that should be going through the finance committee soon. I wanted to, just to explain, cause I had, uh, I had him at number one in my last, our last rankings. And I kind of agree with what you were saying. Like there was a, I put spread a little thin on here. I think that, like I said, he went after the. The, uh, tree regulations stuff, which was smart. I think some of his other amendments, he was trying to do a lot, I think, in one, in one session.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Very ambitious.
Um, and also like you said, I agree that I didn't agree with all of his votes. Sometimes, especially, yeah, the Mitch thing. I think people, I think a lot of councillors kind of vote on intuition in the moment with stuff like that of just like, I think there's a point literally when. Steve Novick's like, it's a 50 50 coin flip. And I'm like, well, that's probably not how you should be voting.
Yeah, it's probably not. Let's not do that amendment.
Especially after the Mitch thing.
Yeah. With an amendment to the mayor's budget, you need to follow the dating advice. If it's, if it's not, hell yes, it's hell no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't opt in just for nothing. But, um, but yeah, I felt like there were a couple of things like that with Eric that was kind of like, nah.
Yeah.
Didn't really agree with that. But that being said, yeah, he's, he's been doing excellent as far as district four representation. Uh, I really like his focus. I think that there was a lot of moments, especially in the meeting this week where he really brought his county experience to light, even though his thing with, um. The sobering center didn't get through, like he was trying to bridge.
Oh, I know.
He was trying to bridge that and make that work. And there's controversy all around that.
I know. I love him for that. He tried. I really, I agreed with him, but yeah.
Um, but yeah, he's number two. Um, that's what I would, just comparing him and Dan, that's my only, I guess, advice for him is like. And it's hard to do, but simplify things to a damn level of like. Stay in that lane. Just do that and you'll be successful with that. And you won't have these other kind of less effective, uh, things going on. Um.
I, I'll say one last thing because this is going to apply to my number three pick as well. Eric is still interested in maintaining. The. Goal of a 12 person collaborative council. He is still committed to that. You can tell by the way he votes, by the way he talks about his.
Yeah.
He's still committed. I think Dan has joined my side, which is that that is, that ship sailed.
Yeah.
It's fine. That ship sailed. We need to get more people on the council that believe in that and we can bring that dream back to reality. I think that Eric and then my number three pick, uh, which is Olivia Clark.
Okay.
They are still trying for that. And I, and maybe they're right. Maybe that's what you want out of your city councillor is for them to so, still be so committed. To the idea of that 12 person collaborative team that they are willing to sit down and, and, and work with and compliment people who I think are, are actual scumbags. Like, like actual scumbags. Maybe that's what you want. You don't want my hot, like.
Yeah, hot energy. It's a good point because like it is interesting. Like when I watch him. Do that, like he, he is polite and pleasant to everyone he interacts with, no matter how much he disagrees with them. And I, I agree. I totally get what you're saying of like, I don't know how effective that is. With what we just saw in the past few weeks, but, um.
It feels idealistic and maybe that's what we want. And so, yeah, so my number three is Olivia Clark and I will level all those same accusations, accusations. I mean, character is characterizations. It's who she is. Olivia Clark's a wonderful person. Um, and I, and I just think, you know, I don't have a lot to say on her because again, my.
Tough. Yeah.
My criticism of, or not criticism. I mean, again, it's just the thing, it's a thing about Olivia. She's what Mitch Green referred to her as a, um. Oh my gosh. Uh, like asset management legend. And that was actually a really good compliment. Yeah. That, that is a person you want in charge of the assets. That is a person you want combing through the numbers and figuring out if we have the money to even. Back to parks. She is the only councillor to lean hard into this idea of we used to have more volunteers in the parks. We used to have more business, private partnerships. If we cannot pay for our parks, you can go the brutalist Steve Novick route and start closing parks, which is what he said in that clip. Or. You can figure out other ways to pay for them.
Yeah.
And it doesn't necessarily need to look like taxes, taxes, taxes. And I love her for that, but that's kind of, she was great. She was a sane vote when you needed six votes to block something nutso. She was usually one of those six. If you needed seven votes to pass something that was sensible, she was usually one of those seven. I was on board with her for most of her votes. I think she's incredibly competent and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I like her on the council. That's all I got really.
I got, yeah, I got it. I agree with pretty much all that. Um. Similar, mine's, uh, I went with Loretta Smith for number three.
Oh.
Um, I think she, I actually have my old rankings here. She moved up.
Yeah.
At least one spot.
She, I think she moved up one for you. Yeah.
So, and it's a tough one because like, I definitely do not agree with a lot of her stuff, but I'm, I'm, I think I'm basing it mostly on her. Like I just, like I said this last night, I just like the attitude she brings to each thing. And I've heard a lot of, from people that have criticism that she's very transactional and I agree with that.
Yeah. That's, that's politics to a certain degree.
And she does, as another negative, she does get sidetracked a lot and she'll start talking about stuff that is not on. I just wrote down, she gets off track easily and she'll start going down a path that doesn't really apply to what they're talking about.
Yep.
But as far as voting policy, I agree with a lot of that. Um, and I always just appreciate the energy in the, uh, scrutiny that she brings. And it's interesting because of what you were just saying with about Olivia, I just think that it's a little more, she's a little more kind of active, you know, they're like. There's times when Olivia is almost like not even paying attention. It seems like, when she is, she's great, but there's sometimes when it's just, she's a kind of like, just. I don't know if she's nodding off or what's going on, but, um, I'm just highlighting the difference between her and Loretta that I see of like, there, there's a little more active. Listening there. Um. And. Yeah, it's a tough one between those two for me, honestly.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, I had Loretta at number three. I, I really do. Appreciate her because I talked about this so much last year. Really, I mean, every single time she gets an opportunity, she really says, why are we giving the county all this money? Why are we giving all that? And she's talking about the agreement between the city and the county for homelessness.
Yeah.
Um, and like, I hear that, like I complained about this so much last year and I was saying, we should disconnect from the agreement completely. Um, I'm not a fan of the county. I know they're doing a little better and that's a completely different topic. Uh, there's a lot there, but, um.
Yeah.
I like, when she goes on that kind of stuff, I'm like, I hear you. Like I'm here for you because that is another kind of voice of sanity and. I'm glad somebody's talking about it. If she wasn't, it would seem kind of strange.
Yeah. I mean, this, so this is, you know, Candace Avalos is. Polls disagree with Candace Avalos, right? They agree with Loretta Smith. Polls agree with Loretta Smith. Loretta Smith is knocking on doors. She's sitting, I mean, she's chatting with her constituents and she's hearing what those polls are saying, especially out of East Portland and what people want. Why are we bankrupting the city over homeless services when that's a county job? Why are we cutting this? Why are we not prioritizing that? She's, she is, I, she wants to be the. Representative of black Portland on the council and she effectively is. And then you got Candace Avalos over here going, well, we all know that polls are, um. You know, biased against people of color. So I don't really pay that much attention.
Even though they cite that police poll all the time.
She's, but she's becoming anti polls because the polls don't agree with her. So she talks about, I knock on doors. I talk to my neighbors. Loretta Smith talks to her neighbors too. And I got to tell you, I don't live in East Portland, but what Loretta Smith is echoing from her neighbors, sounds like what my neighbors are saying.
Right.
They're, they are agreeing with Loretta Smith. They think she's kind of intimidating as well, but like.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point. I think she's, to me, if you're talking about D1 representation, she is the real working class D1 representation, whereas Candace is kind of the. Artificial.
Yeah, that varies kind of like AstroTurf. I mean, she's, she's.
Scripted.
I'll, I'll be mean. She's a carpetbagger, right? She moved to that dis, yeah, anyway.
And I, I want to ask you about that later because we touched on it last time, but when we get to Candace, we'll talk about it. And I just want to say one last thing about Loretta, like. It would be very easy for Loretta, you know, even on that midnight vote, she could have gone along with that. Like it would be very easy for Loretta to say, let's defund the police at every amendment that you guys want to do. Let's do it. But she was vocal and strong about like, we went through this and it didn't work in Portland, you know?
Yeah.
And I just want to point that out. There's a lot of opportunities like this where it's like, that could be really politically easy for her to just jump on that bandwagon. But she didn't do it because she didn't agree with it. And I think that that's important. I don't know.
I mean, Loretta is also, uh, I want to be really careful. I'm going to, I'm going to use the phrase old enough, but Loretta is older. She's mature enough.
Yeah.
It's not.
She used to be a county commissioner.
That's it. But, and when was she a county commissioner, right? Like she was, like she has seen, she's not, she's not old, but she's.
Portland history.
She's been around, you know, longer than I have, and I've been around here a while and she, she has her eyes on another 20 years, right? Cause she's not that old. She's old enough to know better than these games, but she's also, she's got a 20 year plan.
Yeah.
And so when people say like Loretta Smith's out for Loretta Smith, yeah, sure. But I mean, if somebody's out for themselves and their, their idea of a. Future aligns with your idea and you will also benefit, like, I don't know. That's the worst thing in the world. Um, yeah.
And, and I will say absolutely for me, I, and I, I consider myself sort of an adopted district one citizen. I'm right on the border. So. For me, there's nobody else who represents district one in that, in those three.
Yeah.
She is the one that does that.
Agreed. So, agreed. No, love it. Okay. Uh, four?
I think four. Yeah. You did, you just did Olivia, right? Yeah.
Ilana Pertle Guinea.
Okay, moving up.
Yeah, she moved way up.
Was she, were you last time?
Oh gosh, I think she was five. She was five. I, I still, I mean, she moved up. She, she went up one and she, she moved above Loretta and I'll, I'll get to Loretta. That's fine. Uh, I, listen. She's to the left of me. She's way more progressive than I am. I'm sure we disagree on so many things. It boils my blood to see her in so many photo ops, standing next to DSA members. It, that shit drives me nuts, but again, Olivia, Eric, she is. She is holding fast to that idea that this can be a collaborative council, though she's starting to push back, right? In interviews, she's starting to get a little less soft and say, I still want this to be a collaborative effort. We got some people on that council that don't. They just clearly don't. She's saying that out loud. She had an unenviable task of wrangling this council. Oh my God. She kept us from having Candace Avalos as president, which alone did keys to the city. Um, I.
It, it is interesting that you say that, like having, like her mindset going into one of those 12 hour days, I just can't imagine. It's like.
No.
Popping like caffeine pills, like.
This is where I get to prove, I get to prove like when the rubber meets the road, am I. This is where I get to prove, I get to prove, like when the rubber meets the road, am I actually putting Portland before my own feelings? And yeah, because I would not vote for Alana Pertogany and I'm perfectly happy to have her on that council. I think she brings something good to the council. I think she is of benefit to the city and I'm not one of her voters. But like, yeah, I'm, you know what? I think that the progressive movement is done. I think it's cooked and she disagrees and that's totally fine. And yeah, she moved up. I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a EPG guy now, sort of, you know? Or she's, she's the opponent I want. If I'm arguing a point, I want to be arguing against her. Yeah.
Let's see. Four, right? Okay. I'm going Olivia Clark for number four. I think everyone's moving, oh no, she might be the one, two, three, four. She, she moved up one from last time, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You're seeing more of her over time.
Yeah, um, I don't know. You, I think what you said earlier was pretty spot on. Um, I wrote down, she's aloof at times. That's what I meant, but like sometimes it seems like she's just like sometimes you'll literally just say like, can you repeat that again? And I understand sometimes that that's healthy, like you want to understand what you're voting on. But sometimes it feels like that's directly after like they have this kind of debate going on and she's like, what's going on with Olivia? But, but she is um, like as someone in D three, I'm jealous of basically all the other districts for having somebody get like reasonable. And yeah, she's, you know, she seems committed to her campaign stuff of public safety and um, I think parks, she was big on parks probably too.
Yeah, no, but, but in a real way, in a real way where she was actually instead of empty platitudes.
Yeah, no. I'm glad you brought up the volunteer thing, because I thought that was important too of like, nobody's even floated that until I heard her say it of like, and it's true, like it seems like at one point the city in that bureau had a very strong volunteerism kind of force. And that's evaporated and that's one way to alleviate a lot of this, these problems in parks and, um, and yeah, I think sometimes she brings that kind of even outside the city solutions, like solution oriented thinking. That's like, yeah, your experience is actually helping out here. Experience with other government and stuff. Yeah, I was trying to think of other uh criticisms I could give her, like I just think it's interesting because like what you're saying about Dan, I think, I think she could be a little more like that of like knowing, even, even if she's not having outbursts, like knowing when that's appropriate. And she does occasionally do that. On the police votes, she had a little bit to say, but I think she could be a little stronger and maybe also maybe this is outside of her wheelhouse, but also leverage that in a, in a non uh, uh, dias way, like when she's not up there, whether it's on social media or just, but like there's different ways to kind of pressure the issues she's trying to get to.
So, uh, Terrence Hayes lobbed a little friendly criticism at her. He, he gave a little speech.
Thing this week.
And he called, he called her out in public and he was like, Olivia, essentially, I like, I know how you feel about this stuff. Say it, say it out loud, say it louder. Because you are going to be one of the only people up there that has absolutely the correct perspective on these issues. You know how to help East Portland, you know how to help black Portlanders. I have heard you. I know what your theories on these things are. Say that stuff and be the only person up there saying it. Like, like, like have that. That's a strength of yours. Flex it. And I agree, because I've spoken with Olivia in like public settings that were not in city hall. And you know, if it's just a crowd of neighbors talking to her, she, she's very pragmatic. And I mean, people, and, and it's extremely well spoken, but yeah, it's, it, to your point, it's not, we don't need outbursts from her, but we do need.
Some kind of pressure. Well, I think maybe what that is, and I could be wrong about this is like, you know, Dan, and I think that's what you were touching on earlier, is Dan's kind of transforming into this kind of newer persona, not, not persona, but he's transforming into this newer kind of presentation of what he wants to bring. And I think that's what she struggles with is like this kind of old model of like really protecting what you want to say, whereas everyone else on the, on the council is like, they're just going for it. And she's a little more kind of overly cautious sometimes. Um, so that, I, I think that's something she could improve on.
My number five is Loretta Smith. Loretta Smith slid some places for me and I, it's, uh, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I disagree with her often. I still am going to draw my line at number five. There are still five councillors that I want to keep on the city council. Uh, I, I am gonna dig into this children's levy thing. I have just a bad, just a, like a bad stomach about how the children's levy situation went down and is currently going down.
What do you mean by that?
Okay, let me find a, I, so I'm about to say stuff I can't prove, but essentially.
This is the place, it's a podcast.
I'm about to say some stuff I can't prove, so I'm just gonna tell you what my gut, I'm gonna tell you some facts and then I'm gonna tell you that this, it just didn't smell right. Uh, so the Portland's children, Portland Children's Levy, they did like a first reading of their um recommendations for grants to groups specifically around the children's hunger program and specifically groups that were um, gosh, targeting black and brown kids is a weird thing to say, but like focusing on serving, there we go, serving black and brown kids. This was a, a thing that Dan Ryan was involved in. This was whether or not we even want to get into the weeds of whether you want to be separating children by race and just feed all the kids, just be the kids, but.
I was just gonna say that there's a lot of that in Portland and it is like, it's always on the borderline of like illegally discriminated.
Yes, and it's like, okay.
So they always say kind of like, everyone's welcome, but we're really focused on these kids.
That's exactly it. So, so we, we started this exhaustive and annoying process, this, if you're gonna try to be scientific about equity, this is the way that you would be scientific about equity. There was like essentially like a double blind process where they brought in people to look at the portfolios of the organizations, but they didn't get the names of the orgs, so they couldn't be biased.
They're just looking at.
Looking for specific metrics and, and then they weighted it based on whether they had received grants last year or hadn't to try to spread the money out. There was, it was just this exhaustive, obnoxious and hard to detail equity, like DEI process to make sure that we were getting the grant money to the right orgs to help black and brown children.
That's funny, because I thought when you were explaining it, you were gonna say this was focused on like outcomes and like, but it was more just focused on, we're hitting the right hand.
It was actually process focused. If you, if you're gonna do this DEI stuff, like this is sort of how you would do it. And Dan Ryan was very proud of this process and the process was ludicrously transparent and in many ways not the sort of shit show that you normally see with these things in Portland. So Dan has a right to be proud.
There was a good level of transparency to it.
They chose their organizations. They made their recommendations, first reading, public comment. Uh, two or three different black organizations come forward to say, we didn't get money, but you gave money to white organizations like Meals on Wheels. Even though this is the branch of their program that is serving black and brown kids, uh, that is not an organization that is managed by black people. You should not have given them that money.
That rings a bell now that you, I think I heard that.
And somebody else said, you know, uh, the Oregon Food Bank, I, the Oregon Food Bank does good work, but they're not managed by black people. And suddenly it was like, it became about outcomes all of a sudden. It was like, whoa, 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 whoa. You created this transparent and protected system to try to make sure that we weren't like, that everything was legal and above board and that we were benefiting these children. And now we are gonna ask you to turn down this decision and basically put this decision back into a longer process, which is going to freeze funds for these organizations. It is, it is going to hurt organizations. And you know, some local activists got up there and said some things that I think were insanely racist, just weird, like, are we really? Years and years ago, I basically said, you're gonna lose white voters if your definition of white supremacy expands to the food bank. I said that like a decade ago, right? Just because it's a white organization, but that's what the definition these people were using by white supremacy. They just meant there's a lot of white people in this room.
Which is even, yeah, it's just, it's like a uniquely Portland thing of like, hey, this is, and the food bank's totally controversial with their political stuff, but it's like, you can't just, like, it's so hard politically to go after an organization that's handing out food to everybody.
Yeah, well, and specifically has a program to target, but, yeah, again, to focus on, that's a target.
They got all sorts of programs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And yes, they're way too political and they're super controversial, but they're not white supremacist. Uh, the whole thing was, it was, it was pretty offensive. It was a lot of weird posturing and grandstanding and uh, the DSA was really sympathetic to this argument that, oh, there's three black people in the room that are upset, uh, because they didn't get grant money. Now the grant money went to a lot of other black people who are not upset, so they're not here to defend the correct decision that was reached or, you know, the, the, this committee reached through a transparent and accountable process. And, and then Loretta Smith, I just, this is where I can't prove this. I just got the distinct impression that these were groups Loretta Smith was particularly friendly toward, the way she was asking questions, the way she was getting offended on their behalf. What this felt like was we did the job correctly. We did the job that was asked of us, but Loretta Smith's favorite groups didn't get chosen. So now we gotta relook at this process and figure out why Loretta Smith's favorite. And it, it felt
There are moments like that with her where it's like, there's some kind of lobbying connection. You can't quite pinpoint it, but.
This felt like the old bad politics that I, I just, I didn't like it and I'm gonna dig into it more, but I, and you know, Dan, again, being brave, defended this process and said, listen, like these people have worked really hard. These organizations deserve this money. That, uh, it's gross that you're gonna come up here and, and refer to this process that was the, and even like down to the committee, the committee was majority people of color. The, like, they, they went the whole nine yards on making this as super progressive, super like equitable, all of that stuff, to the point of almost parity. And yet the outcome wasn't what a handful of people wanted. This has got it, we gotta reexamine the whole thing and figure out what we did wrong. And I just, I thought, wow, you guys just made like a really great argument for just slashing all DEI programs in the city. If this is the outcome. If we, if we do all these extra steps and you still, you can still just bully your way. So that, she slid down a notch for me and she's, she's on tentative ground with me right now. I'm like.
Well, no, it's, yeah, it is an interesting thing. I was gonna mention that there, you know, to me, Loretta is like very money focused and I guess that's probably any councillor, but it seems, I don't know if that's an over focus, but what I was gonna say is I have a theory and, and there's nothing wrong with this if this is true, but there was a moment in, I think it was the first budget meeting, the first twelve hour, when, and I clipped the part when she was talking about each, each councillor's office gets one point five million dollars. That includes all the salaries of the staff, their office rent, all that stuff. And I, I clipped it because I thought that was a huge number, but my theory is because this all came up because they talked about cutting their, their uh, office budgets to fill some holes and she talked at length about, I'm not giving up any of my money. I'm not doing it. I want to say she talked probably about ten minutes about that and I was sitting there going, she has spent all this money.
Oh, she spent all of it.
That's my theory.
No, she spent all of it, but he, but, but I did love her little dig where she said, but I hired five people. Yes, I hired five people. And what it, so it was beautiful. It was like, because I don't have staffers making a hundred something thousand dollars a year. I'm like, and I liked it because this is something I don't think a lot of Portlanders know. These councillors are making, you know, north of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. And then they're bringing in staffers, in many cases are literally just their friends. And hiring them on at six figure incomes. Like that's what you're paying for. You're paying for twelve people at a, I don't know, nice six figure incomes. They're bringing in more people at six figure incomes to be staffers for a city councillor's office. That's, I don't think Portland really understands how cushy those jobs are. They're very cushy.
It is, yeah. And I, I did my own math. I'll find the tweet if I can read it, but I did my own math when, when that one point five million came out and I put, I tried to divide it with benefits and all the costs that an employee would be. And it was something like that. It was like five or something employees. So she may have
It was she, yeah. Oh, she, and I think that she very much did, whereas the others are, they're sitting on big chunks of change. And then, but then they also hired only two staffers and paid those staffers glorious salaries, salaries that are probably barely lower than their own.
Similar, yeah.
Yeah, which, which plays to that sort of stereotype of the socialist who really just wants to like get in, like hire a bunch of consulting class people and just hire their friends and make sure everybody's got guaranteed public incomes forever.
Right, which, and I, I'll probably touch on that later, but it drives me crazy how many of these guys are just, you know, especially the DSA guys are all about the working class. And I'm like, you guys can't say shit. You're making a hundred fifty grand. And I've said this before on Twitter of like, people always go, it's a hundred and thirty seven. There is a multi-language program with any city staff member could be a councillor where you get bonus money for each language that you speak. So I'm just adding more on top for most, most councillors.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, yeah.
But I just wanted to say, the whole working class stuff, I don't buy any of it from the DSA people. They're flush with cash.
They're, they're flush with cash and most of them are from really nice families. Yeah. So I mean, like, yeah, Loretta Smith's my number five. I'm still drawing that dotted line under the fifth position. I would still.
These are.
I would still keep all of them.
But you're saying after this one, these are bad.
No, I'm done. And I, but then that was the same as last time. I've, I've only ever wanted to keep five of them, but I am, I just, ah, I just, I'm just getting weird feelings off Loretta lately. I don't know. Maybe, maybe I just disagree with her on stuff and that's okay. That's okay. The, the children's levy thing.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm glad you brought it, because I actually di- didn't know that much about it. I, I watched a little bit of that whole levy session, but I didn't watch all of it.
There, there's, there's gonna be a lot of drama to that and I think it just got overshadowed by the budget. So I would, I would let people know. Yeah, I just like look for that. I'm for sure gonna write something on it based on what I can prove. It just, I just sat there and I, I mean, I'll say it again. It just sounded like, wow, you guys just like made like a Republican ad for cutting DEI out of city budgets, because this, it, we spent how much on this? And, and then you hate the results.
Yeah, you gotta start over.
So what is even the point of doing this? Yeah.
Okay, so that was your five, right?
That was my five, yeah.
Uh, my five is EPG, Alana Pertogany. Yeah, this is like, I may edit this out, but uh, I was thinking the whole time before this thing, um, I kinda like in a half joking way, I kinda had a crush on her. But I don't even, I think she is not straight, so.
No, yeah, she has a wife. She has a wife.
And I say, I'm not serious when I say that, but like, I, I mean that more of like in a personable way. I think she carries herself in a really reasonable manner. Like we said before, like I thank God she became the president as opposed to some of these other people who were lined up for it.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And I do think some of the stuff we already said applies, like I wrote down too valuable as president sometimes. I think she's learning from that, like we mentioned. Like she kinda got played a few times and I think now she knows like to be aware of that much more. I was gonna play a clip here. In, I might, yeah, I'll put it here, I guess. When, I, I was stunned when she went off in the meeting from this week, about the Mitch thing.
And that is.
I'll just put it in right here.
Colleagues, I want to do many of the changes that many of you are bringing forward, including this one. And we have to understand the consequences of our votes. And I wish that in the first five months we had been here, we had had the will to do the accountability work in our policy committees, to dig deep enough to understand the consequences of our votes. But I don't hold a gavel chairing a policy committee, so I didn't get to make that happen. So I have yet another amendment before me, asking me to do something that certainly aligns with my values, to fund things that certainly align with my values and it feels downright irresponsible. Because when we did this yesterday, we did things that we did not understand the consequences of.
So, yeah, I, I texted people when that was happening and I was like, this is like a rare sight because.
Oh, I loved her for that. That was great.
Yeah, I, 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 cause I was watching, normally she's very calm demeanor and she just all of a sudden flared up on this little speech and I was like, I don't see this a lot from her. So it's one of those things, kind of like Dan, when we were saying, she knows when to do that and when it's appropriate and when it's effective.
And it was, and it's professional. It was professional. It wasn't, you know.
She doesn't go outside those bounds of.
And she was talking about effects. She wasn't, uh, you know, she wasn't impugning the motives of anybody, which I'm constantly guilty of doing. Uh, she was saying like, these are the effects. We are being reckless. We do not understand what this does. Stop it. Like this is, I can't vote on any of this stuff if you're gonna be doing this junk.
Yeah, and she, she might be the best at, um, yeah, not going ad hominem, like, and I don't know if that's because she is the president, but she is very o- almost overly cautious of like not doing personal attacks.
I think it's a strong value of hers, which I respect. I'm not a value that I have, but I respect it.
It is, it's respectable.
She might be a better person than me, but like, you know, it's fun, like it's fine.
Then me and a lot of these other councillors, for sure. Like she's, uh, uh, let's see here, what else are we, how important are we? Yeah, um, I agree with most of her votes. Um, I wonder if I should put this in now. I'll put it in later, but keep, watch it later when I put the clip in of, um, when Angelita's Stop the Sweeps vote was going through, I've, I've watched this like probably ten times already. It's so interesting because she gets up and leaves seconds before her vote comes up. Seconds before her vote comes up. And it looks like she's on the phone. I don't know how true, but it looks like she wanted to avoid that vote, which ultimately failed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, Mick.
I don't think it's really relevant, but I'm a renter too. I just wanna note that it's my understanding that in order to give rent assistance to everybody who really desperately needs it in the city. Would cost hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars. No.
Pernell Guinea. The amendment fails with six yes votes and five no.
There was one vote away and she could have been that yes vote.
I didn't, I don't know that I really clocked that. That's interesting.
Yeah. And I'll play it. Maybe I'll put it here or later, but um, I'll clip it in either way, but it's really interesting because. Like I said, it's like 10 seconds before they're coming around to her vote.
Sure.
And Candace and Angelina and everyone who voted for it, it was just kind of like. You know, which was kind of the attitude of that whole second round for me, for those more progressive folks was like, we just couldn't do it today.
No, they just couldn't get anything through. Yeah.
And I don't know how calculated that was on EPG's part, but I'm generally a fan of hers. Like I said, she just gotta keep working on the. Being a little more assertive with the moderation on the panel.
She's getting, she's getting there. I think she's getting there.
And yeah, I agree with a lot of what you said. I probably do not agree with her on most policy things.
Sure.
But just how she carries her reasonableness is, is admirable.
That's, that's why she stays in my, in my pool of keeping her, cause if like I, if I showed up to work every day and she was there, right? And this is, you know, whatever the job, I'd be like, oh yeah, like Alana's capable at her job, you know, I'm like, I don't, I don't gotta worry about anything. Cause she's, cause I know she's doing her job. Yeah. She's, she's, and that's she and Olivia Clark ran on kind of the same platform, which was. I'm extremely competent and I get things done. And there's a lot to be said for that. And both of them are so great.
All right. We going on to your six?
Six. I don't have much to say. It's Steve Novick. He's, he's not sliding anymore. Cause here's the thing. I don't care. I just don't care. I don't, I'm not gonna care. Nothing's ever gonna move me to care about Steve Novick. I, you know. Nothing's changed. He voted on the stupid midnight, you know, police thing, but then he tried to walk it back.
Backfilled it.
I just, I, Portland, I don't get it. I don't get him. And, and that's it. He's not, I don't consider him particularly dangerous.
He was, yeah, we could, he's my, also my number six.
Oh, okay.
So we can talk about him, I guess. I was gonna say, did you know, I learned this cause I was recently looking up. Uh, I was telling a story about how I was at the debate when Jeff Merkley first got elected Senator, but did you know he ran it against the primary against Merkley when he first?
I feel like I knew that at one point, but I have forgotten it until now. Yeah.
Had this, I don't wanna call it huge campaign, but he had a campaign that was, um. This whole thing about him being a pirate, this was like in like 2007 and that, I think that's why Angelita had her shiver me timbers thing.
Yeah, I remember this and he.
He made ads and all this stuff. He was trying to be funny.
He like loved that trench coat he used to wear all the time.
He tried to make this kind of. Subversive kind of character.
You know what? I do totally remember trench coat, hook hand, sunglasses, Steve.
Yeah. When honestly, it's like, like with what you were saying, I almost feel like that would be a better, cause I agree. He's kind of just like, eh, like. He's very almost overly casual. He makes, again, I said this last time, he makes really stupid jokes that I don't think.
Sure.
Are funny or provide anything on council. Um, and yeah, he does this stuff where he'll, he kinda tries to be the mediator policy wise. But then like, it just doesn't make sense. Like he'll vote for stuff and then try to back out of it or like fix it. I will give him props.
Props are about to be had for Steve Novick.
Yeah, I'll put a clip in here cause he, he stood up in a real, I think, good way about, uh, the Mitch measure, which we'll talk about later.
We want to respond to what Counselor Mario just said. First of all, this is not something that was negotiated with everybody in the council. Five people got goodies out of it and got two other people to vote with them. Five people. So I think. Well, but so you, you pick and choose who you wanted to be part of the discussion. Also, a number of us were opposed to this yesterday because we were concerned that random cuts would have consequences that we didn't know about. Because there was an assumption that we would, that there was waste, fraud and abuse out there, that we don't know where it is ourselves. We're counting on the bureaucrats to figure it out. I think that the five people that voted for something that gave them goodies and found out that there was unbalanced. The honorable thing to do is to vote to balance it by cutting their own goodies rather than, and I realize I like some of these goodies myself. But rather than force the rest of us to vote for other cuts we hadn't considered before.
Oh, that was good. Yeah. Okay.
And also give him props for, um, he is kind of constantly sounding the alarm on the office budget, on the council budgets. He's like, he said that in that last thing he said.
Yes.
That was his proposal to fix Mitch's huge budget hole was like, let's cut 30, 40 grand for each of our offices. We are drastically overpaid for our city size. And so I'll give him props for that.
Okay. That, that's what I'll say about Steve Novick is like, I, I keep, my neighbors keep being like, how do we get 12 good city council? You can't get 12 good cities. Nobody cares. You don't need 12 sane city councils. You need seven. That's a lot to, you need seven. And if Steve Novick is in that number, then you need eight. Because he's just not reliable in that way. I can't trust him. I, half the time or more, I like the way he voted and I like his reasoning. But it just like, if I'm trying to build my coalition of seven to get reasonable governance, if Steve Novick's in the seven, then I need eight just to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I am still like, I'm knocking everyone on this list for the initial defunding. I gave him a little bit of like his own vote. I restored a little bit of that because he tried to fix it, but it's just like, you can't be. That's a little retroactive to be, you know, and, and if I remember correctly, his whole campaigning was very much pro public safety. And I know, I know a lot of these guys now say, well, that includes parks and that includes, to me, that's not what that means. We're talking about first responders when I hear public safety. So whether that's fire, police or whatever, and, and I think he needs to kinda.
Yeah. When you say public safety, you mean, you mean the public safety part of our budget and that is very specific. We're not this.
I would even include PSR in that, but it's like, we're not, we're not saying.
They're in it.
We're not saying the operation of a park includes.
That's, that's where we're talking about concepts, right? That's, you know.
And I get it. Like I agree, sending kids to park act, after school activities, sure. Like that can help later in their life develop a way away from crime. But like, to me, when we're talking about public safety, like I said, it's first responders, crimes that are happening right now and stuff that can abate that.
Yeah, no, for sure, for sure. Yeah, I, I.
I just feel like he needs to align with that a little bit more, cause that was a big thing for his campaign.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. I want, one, one last thing about the yes, the yes votes. So just, just, so I, cause I need people to understand this in their heads. Oftentimes in life in general, doing nothing is better than doing something incorrectly. But specifically in the case of these votes, you can vote no on something and then move to reconsider it later, right? So you can do a strategic no, and we saw that a couple of times, right? Samir Canall did a strategic no. You saw, if you vote no on an amendment before the final budget, in this example, we're talking about the budget, but we could be talking about an amendment package, other thing. There is an ability to move to reconsider if you were a no. Only you vote yes on something.
Right, right.
You are a yes on something unless a no vote triggers a reconsider, right? So this is, you throw the rock. If it hits something, it's on you. You threw the rock. Not throwing the rock is the safer thing. So the fact.
Voting yes is the ultimate opt-in. You can't change that.
When you shoot from the hip with yeses. That's reckless, cause you can end up with really bad. So, and that's why I say he's unreliable, cause he will vote yes on stuff. And I go, oh, I would have loved a strategic no, and you could reconsider it later. Even Tiffany Koyama Lane said something this week, which was like, if I was gonna be your seventh vote, I'd vote yes on this. But I'm gonna vote no, cause I think it's gonna be like five, you know, she was like, I, I have, you know, issues. Like there are people that strategically vote no for all sorts of reasons, but they all seem to know. Saying that word a lot, uh, that, uh, you need to be careful about your guesses and Novick does not feel careful with his yeses.
Yeah. No, that's really interesting. You brought that up. And this is probably a good segue because you're not gonna like this dude. You're not gonna like. But I'm going number, should I, is it your turn?
It's definitely yours.
I'm going Samir for number seven.
Oh, we're gonna really disagree on that. And that's fine.
But here's what I'll say is like, I think me positioning here at seven is almost an accident. I think that a lot of things. In his mind went wrong this week.
Sure. Oh.
And that, that's, I think that's mostly why I'm elevating him because there's a lot of clips. I'll, I'll put one in here. Right now of where he, he recognized how bad things were going.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and it's just really interesting to like watch, um, like you were just mentioning the ability to change a vote. There was a moment where he said. I wanna say this was after the sweeps vote, which failed.
Yes.
But he said, he asked Robert Taylor, the city attorney, he said, when is it too late to change my vote? And you can barely hear Robert's. You can barely hear him saying, once the final roll call is called, that's it.
At what point is it too late to change your vote?
When, once the roll call has been completed and the clerk has announced the result, it is too late to change your vote. Unless you have unanimous consent of the other members of council.
We can now move to.
And he goes like this. He just goes. And he's just like clearly disappointed.
Yep. Okay, okay. So we're not actually gonna disagree. We just have our rankings.
I just wanted to qualify it with, I, I think I'm ranking him so high because a lot of things went awry, not in his favor. But I will give him credit and everyone credit for who, who, who voted against Candace's, uh, defunding amendment.
Yes.
I still am not sure. I, I, my read on that is like, he, I mean, even Jamie Dunphy voted against, everyone voted against it, that you would think that would vote for it. The only four were Mitch, Angelita, Tiffany. And Candace. But I'll give him credit for that. I'm still trying to figure that out. I, my read is that they all knew it was dead on arrival.
Is dead and it is a.
And I think he.
That's unpopular. It's an unpopular.
I think he was the one even asking, so you took fire out of this. So this is just going after police.
Because he said over and over again, uncrease, uncrease, uncrease. It's nothing's going down, nothing's going to, that is a decrease. That is a. Get back out of that. And I, and I, not that I'm saying that he's thinking about me. Oh, but I was gonna like teeth into him the next day. Oh, Samir, what happened to three sixteen equals three sixteen?
That's a good point. I, I think you're totally right about that because one of the things I was gonna say was I don't, I don't think his, uh, uncrease thing landed. I know that they all think.
They thought it was cute. No, people.
I don't think it worked.
It sounded dystopian. It sounded newspeak. It sounded, it sounded very enhanced interrogation. I'm lying to you, so I need to make up a word. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think your average kind of over forty voter would be like, I can't tell if that means it is or it isn't. That just sounds like a word that you made up. And that's exactly what.
I'll give him even more credit. I mentioned to numerous clients, the word, the phrase uncrease. And they were like, oh, so he's full of shit. They, they, it smelled bad. So, yeah, okay. No, we don't actually disagree. I just, he ends up a little lower on me, but he ends up higher than some might expect because, uh, he proved to be largely toothless.
Yeah, um, the only things I wrote on here, I wrote overly combative. Like you see that all the time. Like he's.
Yes.
And I will say, and I think again, it's because things weren't going his way this week. I think he was a little bit less of that. He was a little more cordial, but. I also wrote down, uh, I, I did, you know, hi, his amendment did not pass for this, but I actually agreed with him. On his amendment to cut a lot of management and bureaus. I was like, I was just like, sure, let's take a look at this and.
But I think that was one of the ones where it came down to people just didn't trust his math anymore at that point.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think after the Mitch vote, people were just like, I don't know if this is really gonna, this could blow up in our face and.
And did you see that Mitch's chief of staff threw Samir under the bus for that?
Yeah. He said it was because of his amendments.
His amendment, he's bad. He's, his math wasn't good. So I think, I think, yeah, no, no, that's okay. Fair enough. I, I agree. I don't, I don't, I think I have.
And that was a tough decision for me, but I just like. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
These last ones, as we said last time, are very hard for me to rank because they're all bad.
Well, I'll, yeah, I'll go to seven and this, I don't. Seven is Jamie Dunphy because I just don't, I, I don't think he's dangerous enough. Like I, I hated almost everything that he said and I disagree with him on so, so, so many things. And I am shocked by how much I dislike him in that seat based on our interactions on the campaign trail. I don't dislike him as a human being. I'm not, but like just. No, no. Um, he is all feelings over figures. This guy would shatter our economy. If you gave him the reins of anything, right? He wants Airbnb gone. He wants Lyft gone, but with no idea for what that might look like or what the impacts might be. Let's just get.
He, he knows his boogeyman and that's.
He, he resisted the idea of the pad share app. Because it's, because it's apps and it's tech bros and he just, uh, no.
Yeah.
He is a guy of you grabbed drinks on a Friday night and he was going on one of these rants, you could just kinda write it off, but you just don't want that on your city council. But he's also not like powerful enough or influential enough to be, uh, dangerous.
Yeah. So I was gonna add, did you hear the guy testifying that was like, said Nick Fish is rolling over in his grave? And then he's like, but he was cremated, so that doesn't make sense.
Commissioner Dunphy, I also campaigned for you. We discussed this. You put public safety as your number one. And I, I feel the same betrayal. Um, Nick Fish is turning over in his grave. Well, he's cremated, but you know what I mean?
I, yeah, yeah. I, no, yep. He's seven and it's just because, it's just because the pack below him is worse. I would, you gotta get rid of him, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did.
You did some.
Yeah. So it, my A is Jamie. This is kind of a lot of what I said last time, but he is the number one as far as, he just seems, what did I write? He just seems like he's pretending. And what I mean by that is, I think he's doing his best impression of a city counselor and I think he, because he's more of a policy guy, that's kinda what he did for Nick Fish is like. I think that's his role and I think that when he's up there, he's just kinda pretending and putting on his best face as a city counselor and he's not very good at it. And I also have this little, I was gonna make a compilation of, because you always say he's Candace's second and I was gonna make a compilation, maybe I'll play it here of where he goes. Aye, aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
I, I, there were a couple of times when he didn't, and her amendment to defund was one of them.
Yeah, there were.
Which was kind of shocking.
That first day he disagreed with her twice. Like first day he disagreed with her twice, second day, you know, it's again, it's very rare.
Rare.
It's rare. It's rare.
And I will say this, like, without getting too much into the weeds, there are. More serious conversations happening about, uh, District One recall and it involves him. Um, I think personally, I think he'd be the easiest target out there. Some people say Candace. But I just think that he. It seems like he's disappointing a lot of people and he's not really. Yeah, like there's another clip I have, maybe I'll put it in here where he, it, it was from this week in the, in the crazy budget session. And he wanted to make like some grand like speech and so everyone lets him, like clears the thing, lets him talk and he, he kinda just fizzles out. Like you'll see in the clip.
Yeah.
But he kinda just, he goes like. He's like looking on the computer and he goes, I'm not ready. Come back to me.
Dunphy, are you in the queue to speak to this amendment?
I am, yes.
Go right ahead.
Counselor Canall, I would like to offer to, uh, see if you'd be amenable to an amendment that my team has been trying to work on. Which would. Change the ongoing amounts. Sorry, I'm trying to read a red line version of this. Sorry, come back to me. Give me a second.
So they just skip it and it's like, that's, that for me sums up the whole, his whole kinda way he carries himself so far is just like.
Yeah.
He's not really prepared. He's disheveled. He doesn't really know much beyond like what you said of just slogan stuff, going after the easy boogeyman.
Yeah, he knows he, he hates Live Nation and he hates corporations.
And, and again, I think like we were saying earlier, I, I feel so, I feel bad for District One in a lot of ways, cause they just don't have anyone, in my opinion, except for Loretta. If I, if I had that guy, I would be. Just because of what he doesn't bring i- is frustrating.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I don't know. What else to say about him?
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I'm not gonna have anything to add here, but my eight is Samir Canall. So we're just doing the flip thing with Jamie and Samir. They're, they're just, I don't like either of them. I want them gone. But, um, they're both failing to really get their teeth into anything in a way that I think is particularly dangerous. Right? Uh, a lot of the sillier Jamie things that he put forward got struck down. Similar with Samir. Samir's, a lot of his sketchier stuff. Just didn't, just didn't go.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's bad at math. I don't like the guy. I think he's absolute fraud and a liar. And I think there's a lot that is really, really. Wrong with the way that he does this job and yet he's just not setting as many fires as his co-counselors.
Yeah. I was thinking, maybe I'll put this clip in here. I had, I had another clip where on the second night of late night antics, he like. I don't know if you were watching it, but I knew immediately when he goes. I'd like to give the floor to whatever.
May I have the floor to amend that motion?
Please go right ahead.
Withdraw the, the motion and yield to Counselor Koyama Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I.
You, you can see a look on his face when he just goes like, he knows what he's doing. He sits back from the mic and he gives a floor to Tiffany to get, push her amendment through.
Yeah, to try another, another rope a dope.
Yeah, he knew this was another last minute thing that probably shouldn't be happening at this moment. And it's just interesting because you can see these moments on his face where he knows.
Yeah.
He knows he shouldn't be doing that. And I wish more people, you know, would pay attention to local politics at all, but like, if you could see that, you see that it's kind of a facade here. Like he's not really.
Yeah.
Being a hundred percent honest with people.
And the defense of that, you know, the next day on Blue Sky is essentially white corporate America has been doing this to us for years. So now we learned how to, we learned how to cheat the way that you cheat. And it's not even cheating. It's just abusing the rules. But like you guys, you guys cut corners all the time. So, oh, you're mad now that we're cutting corners? And again, it just perpetuates this myth that like, you and I are wealthy, white, moneyed interests, uh, and we're corporate shills and we're police backed and we're, like, I'm so tired of, of just the way that they treat Portlanders as if anybody who disagrees with them has got to be taking police union money. And also they work for a Fortune 500 company. Like most of you jerks worked for Fortune, like.
Yeah.
You're the, yeah. So no, yeah. I mean, he's, he's, he's where he is in my ranking. I, I dislike the dude, but, uh, the four below him are just, they're more impactful.
Getting into the, the real bad ones. Um, yeah, I thought there was something I was gonna say about it and I forgot, but, um, let's move on, I guess. Yeah.
Nine, Candace Avalos. She's, she's probably higher than many people think she's gonna be, but I, um, mm.
I mean, all these for me are like, I get it. It's hard to.
So.
Place these last ones.
I, I, I've been trying to figure out nice, nice, kind. I don't care about nice. I'm trying to figure out kind ways to say this. Uh, I don't think that Candace Avalos will win reelection because I think what she is proving to people is she can't go the distance. The, I want to try to say this in a compassionate way. These sessions are really hard on her. Like hard on her. I don't, I was talking to a mutual friend and she said that one of the reasons why there's a pipeline from school board to city council and above is because school board sessions, you can't really recess. You just gotta keep going.
He's just there.
And so like Brim Edwards and, and, uh, and Miran would, would run the, or Myron would run these, um, uh, you know, marathon sessions and poor Lori Stigman would just be on death's door, like debating these women all night. And I think you're seeing that with Avalos. I mean, she's.
Endurance kind of issue.
She's lost some of the time. She's really, really emotional in a way that doesn't seem like she's like a dysregulated human being, but just seems like she is like.
It's not helpful.
She is just tired and just like, she is.
Well, you made me think, do you, did you see that one part where it, I can't remember what vote it was, but they came to her and she just took like a full minute and just was like.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I was like, I was sitting there going, what the fuck is going on?
I wasn't looking at the screen and I had to turn back and be like, even at 1.5 times speed, that was a long pause.
Avalos.
And I think even EPG was like, yeah, hello, like what's.
Yeah, no.
But she almost had a little breakdown and it was like, that, is that what you're talking about?
And I'm not, and again, I'm not trying to be like, but I just, it's not, those are the ways in which this is a hard job. Not the, you have a cushy job and go chat with people about what they want. You gotta make hard decisions, but you gotta sit there in these marathon sessions, which could be less marathon if y'all would shut up, but you gotta be able to do that part of it, you know, when what Cory Booker did that marathon.
Yeah.
Be filibuster.
Yeah.
That's hard.
Yeah.
That is physically and cognitively hard.
Anything over 12 hours. Yeah.
Right? So, but this, so I'm, I think she's not, I don't know. She just doesn't, she doesn't have it.
Yeah.
So as much as I disagree with so much of her political theory, and I disagree with so much about how she views race and, and, uh, how to combat racism and what the appropriate solutions are for society's problems. I mean, we're like diametrically opposed on an awful lot. I also just don't, I don't think she's got it.
Yeah.
Well, so she doesn't scare me as much as.
I, I mean, I agree with that. Yeah. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Like, and I'll, when I get to her, there's some stuff I want to say about that.
Yeah. But she is at this point to me, functionally a DSA member. Uh.
That's what it seems like. That's why I was texting you the, like a month ago or whatever, asking, cause it's, I, I was, I just assumed that she was.
I can't, I can't see daylight between them anymore. Even Dunphy, there's still a little bit of daylight, but I just, she's, she's carrying water for them and I, I'm, 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 I'm bored of it and I don't, I'm eager to be rid of her, but we got her for another three years. So.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Long time.
Who's your number nine?
Uh, I'm going, again, these last ones are hard. I'm, I went Mitch, Mitch Green.
Okay.
Uh, and this is the time I was gonna just talk about his, what I, I wrote on here, massive amendment fuck up. And I just, it just blows my mind. I still can't believe, um, I was gonna put a little highlight in here of like how much they, the contrast of how much they talked up this amendment of, hey, we're gonna help this, we're gonna help this, we're gonna, and then the next day you see the chaos and the anger uh, that this caused. And like you said earlier, his, someone on his team had said, well, it came from Samir's amendment. I personally don't care where it came from. I think these guys should have thought this through to the point of basic numbers and say, this is not gonna, uh, unbalance our budget in a way that just creates.
Yeah.
Dysfunction and anger and.
Yeah.
Um, it's unforgivable to me. It really is like, a, and I had trusted him way more with anything financial before this, but I, now I'm just like, I can't trust him even on that. That was the one thing that I was kind of giving him a little leeway on. Um, and you definitely see the ideological block voting.
Yeah.
Like he goes along with every single, like I said, he was one of the four that, that did vote for Candace's amendment.
He's, he, listen, he's an economist and he knows how to read charts until he doesn't, until he suddenly magically forgets how economics works and he forgets how incentives work and he forgets everything that he has probably written papers on.
Yeah.
Cause he's gotta vote with the party. Yeah. Yeah. The only grace I'll give him on that huge fuck up is that he is suffering in the same way that Zimmerman and the others are, which is that, you know what? Those bureaus have made that money really opaque to figure out. They don't want to get messed with. They, they want to be left alone. And so I want to give him and his staff, even though I loathe them, a little bit of grace that I'm sure that they were dealing with the same bullshit that Zimmerman's office was dealing with, not getting updated numbers, tap, oh, where's that? Wait, this is three million over here, but 4.5 over here. How does that add? So, you know, he's, he, the only grace I will extend is that that sword cuts both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Still a huge fuck up. Still ridiculous.
The only other thing I was gonna say too, and I was trying to do this with everybody, but just even outside of the budget thing, his whole protecting PSU demonstrators, uh, anti-semitic demonstrators.
I'll get to that.
Like that's, that was also unforgivable to me and it just shows you that to me, like he's completely unethical. It's like, dude, if you're willing to give a free pass to people that have broken laws.
Yes.
In this library takeover that costs over a million dollars. It's like, that's not cool and that's not ethical. Um, and it shows that, I don't know, this theme in Portland that I notice of, um, siding more with criminals and victims.
Um, yeah.
And I'm just like, dude, you're morally bankrupt and, uh, I also, I had a clip on here. I'll put on here too of him. He, he's just very flagrant and open about his extreme ideology. And he had a clip I'll put in here where he's talking, he's talking up Marx, him and, uh, uh, Steve Novick, kind of make up Marx quote.
Yeah.
Um, what was it, uh, councillor Green that Karl Marx said about real corporeal man with his feet planted firmly on the solid ground?
I'd just like to respond to councillor Novick about the Marx quote. Um, Marx also said in the beginning of the 18th premier, he said something to the effect of, um, you know, all, all the previous dead generations weigh like a nightmare on the brains of the living. So previous revenue choices that we've made in the past specifically really allocating every single one to a specific use down to the T, I think has left us a little bit vulnerable.
But yeah, it's just, I don't know. He, 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 as time goes on, he grates on me more and kind of disgusts me more. So.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to hear that. Uh, uh, 10. I think that Tiffany Koyama Lane is an absolute, uh, moral disaster. I think she is the phoniest, I will echo what I've said before, the phoniest member on that council, that nice teacher, let's all get along vibes are absolute nonsense.
Yeah. I still always remember thinking, when you talk about her blocking you, it's just, it paints that picture very clearly. It's like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Seems nice, but.
No. And I've, and I've, I was pleasant enough to extend to her the idea that, uh, this was something where the party felt a certain way, pro political violence, pro whatever, and you don't, but you're a member of the party, but maybe, you know, you'll have something to say about that. So I was nice at first, right?
You're not just accusing her like.
No, you know, cause there's, there's, yeah, members of the Republican party that, you know, I'm happy to, Will Lethrop, I would just send him an email and ask, whoa, Will, like, let me think about this, this thing, you know? Because I'm going to extend him the courtesy of that, but, but yeah, I get blocked for it. I, I don't get answered. Tiffany Koyama Lane endorses every single thing the DSA is doing through her silence alone. Uh, the only reason she is not at the absolute bottom is, well, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that, but no, she's, she's, she's a, she is a bad person pretending to be a good person.
That's, yeah, that's a good way to put it, I think.
She's very good at pretending to be a good person because she was a teacher and again, she's got that character. Uh, it's, it's slipping, but um, yeah, no, 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 just, just no.
No, yeah. Uh, 10, right? We're doing 10. Um, this is probably a little generous, but I went 10 Angelita. I mean, what can you say? This is what happens when someone with a severe case of TikTok brain gets into office. She's delulu, she's race baiting, she's anti-business and she's anti-semitic. You know, I think that what, one thing I hear about her a lot is people give her props for her ability to navigate her, her knowledge of policy. And I agree with that. Like it is.
Yeah.
She's better than most at those things.
Listen, she is a legit policy nerd, right? Mitch is a legit economist. She is legitimately a policy wonk. That's her. She'd be a great staffer.
And there's a lot of.
Great staffer.
Sort of cleverness around that. Uh, and maybe that's why I'm putting her slightly above, but yeah, I think, um, like this weekend in the, in the long meetings, one of the things that she kept, I'm gonna try to make a compilation here of when she did this a lot, but I wrote, uh, tone police queen, cause, cause she kept going, I just want to remind everyone.
I would like to remind everyone, zero amendments put in that package and I will emphasize again, I want to make it very, very clear. So I just want to be clear about who is responsible for what happens here on out. This is actually at this point, I think a strategic time wasting measure, and I would like for us to end the debate.
She always starts things with that and then she'll talk for 10 minutes or whatever about something which ate up this time we keep talking about. Um, but to me, that's just so, even as somebody who's, you know, almost 40, it's insulting coming from such a young person. And I know this is a hot take, but like, I'm almost to the point where I'm like, I get why we have a 35 year minimum for president of the United States.
Yeah.
I want something like that on city council because sometimes this shit that's coming out of her mouth is so ridiculous. And I know that a, a lot of that kind of just feeds into her, well, you don't like my brashness, whatever.
Chiding.
But it's not helpful to anything.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's just insulting to come from a 20 something year old to be telling people with way more experience, way more.
Let me educate you about how the world really works.
Yeah. Um, and she just did so much of that this week.
So much of it.
But I also think that she, like I said earlier, kind of had a reality check with some of these. I think she thought all of her stuff would just sail through her, all of her amendments and.
Yeah.
Not all of them did, you know, she was partially successful. Um, it gives me a little more faith in the system overall that she's not able to just cram that stuff through. Um, but yeah, I just don't think. I, I don't know. I said it last time. I don't think she's helpful to Portland. I, I think that, that she has patented the model, like I said earlier, of just build a huge social media and just go from there. And I don't, I don't think that's a healthy way to build a body doing council stuff. I'm curious to see what she'll do after this budget thing of any kind of, um, legislation she wants to get through.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, at least this time she wasn't involved with like a violent protest like last.
Hey, at least there's that. At least there's that. Yeah. Number 11, Mitch Green. Mitch has slid quite a few notches for me. I'm.
Where was he last time?
Oh gosh, he was up at like seven or something. And, and it galled me to say that, but he had been pretty reasonable and competent up until that point. And let's see what's happened since then. He threatened PSU. He threatened a public university with defunding unless they let his friends, uh, out of the consequences of their actions scot-free. Um, yesterday someone reached out to him on social media to ask, how do you feel about Portland police breaking their, their agreement and working with ICE to terrorize First Amendment, uh,
basically arrest people that are breaking the law.
Who are set, trying to set fire to a building.
Which is the same thing with PSU.
Yeah. Felony arson, right? Uh, and he, he, you know, re, reskeaded this or whatever. Yeah, it's really concerning. We're looking into it and I'm working with my colleagues to make sure it doesn't happen again. P P B's out of, out of pocket, basically. Uh, no, it is, it is the Portland Police Bureau's job to prevent you from piling flammable objects in front of a building and setting the building on fire. That, that is actually.
Crime.
That is actually.
Charged.
That is actually literally their job, but, but okay, fine. Also there are thousands and thousands and thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people in America today protesting against ICE and Donald Trump without, uh, committing arson. They're doing it great. Good, good job. It's not that hard to do. Uh, Mitch Green doesn't care, right? You said he's a, he's a person of extremely low moral character. Uh, his party has engaged in so much vile and hateful rhetoric. He is a councillor from district four. District four has, but we are overrepresented for Jews in Portland, right? West, the West Hills Jews, the Northwest Jews, we are overrepresented for Jews. Um, he's not well-liked on the west side of the river at this point. He hides in Selwood, right? Like when he has his town halls, he has them in Selwood. Uh, because the last time he popped into the Pearl, he didn't have a particularly warm welcoming for one of his town halls. People know what he's up to. They, uh, he won because people ask the question, Mitch who? They didn't know who he was and, and my goal is to make him a household name. I want you to know that he's the communist guy that threatened PSU, right? He's the guy that, that, that referred to a, a, a man who self-immolated over Israel as brave. Right? Like he's a ridiculous person. He is pro-political violence. He has made that very, very clear. He is pro-terrorizing private citizens as long as they disagree with him. And he, the veneer of like an economist who likes unions is barely holding together at this point.
Yeah.
But he's just, his silence on, you know, the, I, I wrote a piece on the Beaverton Intifada and that shouldn't relate to Portland, right? It's Beaverton. But it was the Portland DSA that went there to do that. They went to call for intifada in front of a school building and I covered that story so thoroughly because I could actually get Beaverton parents to speak to me because Beaverton parents are marginally less frightened to speak to me than Portland parents are. But what they said is at least our kids don't live in Portland. Portland Public Schools is so much worse. The DSA is so much more powerful there. You would hope that this guy who's so, you know, running, running with the DSA's family platform would say anything about this nonsense. No, nothing because he condones it. Yeah, no, Mitch, Mitch Green is a, I, the dude just sucks. He's, he's just a shitty person. I'm sorry. He could not be a shitty. He could choose to stop being a shitty person. I'm not saying it's like an immutable characteristic. Um, but yeah, it, it's just, I was happy to see neighbors finally get who he was after the PSU threat. After he was like, yeah, we're gonna block your ability to build an arts center. And then when that same, when the, the arts center came up this week.
The PSU.
Yeah.
Thing.
It came up as like an exploratory thing. Somebody had a budget note. He made some comment on it that just like kind of ignored that he had recently threatened arts funding in this city over, you know, yeah.
He was kind of trying to just say like, hey, it'll be a great new center.
Yeah, exactly. It was just, no, just, just, just treating it as normal.
If you didn't attack.
Yes.
Yeah.
And here's the thing, he didn't apologize over threatening PSU. He owned it. He didn't even argue that it was a mischaracterization of his actions. He owned it. He was proud of it. The Portland Mercury bragged about him for it. The DSA bragged about it.
That's what I was thinking. He, he knows he'll get like earned media where he wants it, whether that's the DSA or Portland Mercury or.
Angelita Mario bragged about it. I'm proud to stand with my brother Mitch Green. You're the best. You're, you know, you're a real one or whatever. Like everybody knew what he did. And it wasn't, it wasn't even a like, oh no, that's an exact, no, like, that's been the shocking thing to me. I write these kind of articles on these people. And then I'll read what they're saying of, you know, they find out the article was written about them. And they say things like, why'd he make us look so fucking cool? Like they.
That's what I meant earlier when I was saying like, a lot of the stuff like we say, I think that just feeds into their own.
Sure.
Bullshit and I don't get it.
No, and, and the good news is that they think that, right? They think that the, the, the midnight police thing was like a slam dunk. They think that the PSU threat was a slam dunk. They think that the, the, the midnight police thing was like a slam dunk. They think that the PSU threat was a slam dunk. They think that all these, the, the constantly insulting Janelle Bynum, and I'll get to that, uh, were slam dunks. They're crushing it, but they're only crushing it in the tiny bubble that they live in. The average Portlander, I can send a nice old lady in District Three who voted for Angelita because she was a scrappy young Latina. I can send her those clips and she's going to go, ew, I'm not voting for her again. She's, she's kind of gross. Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking when you said that it is like, I think most people would probably tell after that first midnight defund vote that they were just jubilant, whatever you want to say. But I, I know for a fact that they, like after that, when they went to their own offices, they were high-fiving each other and stuff. This stuff I heard from people, but
The Mean Girls won, yeah.
Yeah, it's, and it's just, my reaction was like, after hearing that was like that, you know, affecting public safety in that manner should never be something you celebrate publicly or not.
And, and I, and I
They, they say all this bullshit in, in all these meetings about every decision's hard, every decision's hard. We don't want to be doing this.
The budget is
They celebrate that like five times over.
Oh yeah. Well, and this is, I loved, the one thing that Terrence said that I really loved is he's like, I don't care about two million dollars. Nobody cares about two million, two millions, nothing to the city. It's, it's the rhetoric. It's the, it's the false choices. It's the spitefulness. It's this, this yeah, fight. We don't need to be doing this and that's
Yeah, I should have, yeah. I'm gonna back up a little bit, back to Angelita. I just wanted that, because you made me think that was I, I don't know if she's trying to like, um, make this into a formula or something, but she kind of patented that whole false choice thing. And, and I'm glad so many people recognize it now. Like it doesn't have to be this one or the other. And I think she uses that as a strategy at every chance she gets.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and the, this is the DSA playbook, right? You gotta tax the rich to fund the families.
Yeah. A divide and then playing off that. I was going to mention with her too, she, I have a theory because she had a budget note that passed that was really interesting. Uh, the I always forget the name, the term of the, but the, uh, police forfeiture. You know what I'm talking about? And I have a theory after I saw that pass and after everyone basically, the city attorney and um, is it Mike Myers, the guy with the, the, I think Mike Myers was the guy that he replaced, but the, the PBM guy who does emergency management.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Basically, they both said, him and the attorney said, what could happen if this passes is you could lose all of the forfeiture funding money. Because the law says if your city council is dictating how you spend it, you can't have access to it.
As councillor Novick mentioned, asset, uh, dictating asset forfeiture funds being used for that could jeopardize the funding stream as a whole.
Yes. My theory is that was her plan the whole time.
Yes, yes.
She's going to pass this, then they're going to lose. It's basically a defunding mechanism in itself.
The only mistakes I think Angelita Mario makes are tonal, like not reading the room. I don't think she makes like stupid mistakes with her. No, no, no. I think she knows exactly what her policy does. Yeah, I think she's very, very smart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm curious to see what will happen with that. Like if, if, because my understanding is the other federal cases that involve forfeiture property.
Yeah.
And since our federal cases, it's up to them to determine whether we get that money. And if they lose all that money, that's what I'm curious to see. So anyway.
Alright, uh, so who's your eleven?
Uh, eleven, I went Tiffany Lane.
Tiffany Koyamalane.
Um, gosh. You know, a lot of what I said last time, she, she, she's opened up a little bit more. She's a lot more vocal. Still not to the level that I would like to see, but um, the big things with her are, you know, I covered this a lot online and stuff, but the uh, her retreat idea of bringing in this consultant group. He basically set up a two-hour meeting, I think with all the counselors and spent a lot of time talking about this and I called it, it was, it was a sales pitch and she wants to get them out on this retreat out of the public eye so she can reset the council. That's been one of her own, one of two only things she's done this whole goddamn time, which is driving me crazy. The other thing she does is Vision Zero, which I could talk at length about how I disagree with that as a reasonable investment. I mean, we've been doing it for over a decade.
Loretta's right, it's not working.
It makes things worse. It's failed in every city that it's been tried in.
It's a really
And, and it's a money pit and it's like, you keep doing this stuff and all it does is either slow down traffic or increase fatalities. That's not a good program.
Yeah.
And she, Tiffany is the epitome of things to, she loves to get behind things that are easily popular.
Yeah.
Vision Zero, parks, um. I think there's another thing I was trying to remember. Um, but yeah, it's, it's that whole kind of old teacher persona and you see that fall apart in that second kind of midnight vote and um, maybe I'll clip it in here, but you see her just go, she's saying this while she's smiling. She goes, I'm sorry, President, but we tried to do it. This was the only way we could do it. And you kind of see that veneer fall off and, and my, my whole complaint about that whole thing was I agree with EPG completely, like
Yeah.
Yes, that is technically allowed by the rules. What's not allowed is, why did you pick her? It goes back to a DSA block mechanism of like, you could have put anyone in, in the front of the line like you did with Tiffany.
Yeah.
But they coordinated and decided to have Samir give the floor to her to allow this to happen and they all coordinated to do that, which could be breaking, you know, public meetings a lot. I don't know, but um, that's what upset me about that whole thing. And it just, again, it, it gets to the core of the, of the lack of ethics for a lot of these folks. And it's like, she can seem as pleasant as you want, but that, that girl's rotten inside.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. She knows exactly what she's doing. Yeah.
Even if it was, you know, they kept saying, well, it's innocuous little thing. It's not going to add or subtract money. I don't fucking care. It's wrong to put her in the front of the line.
Yeah.
At midnight, when everyone else had stuff they wanted to propose. So just like
And as EPG pointed out, she left so much stuff on the table personally.
Yeah.
Because she was present.
Everyone else. And Loretta spoke up too, said, I have a lot of stuff I want to get through, but
Dan had a lot of stuff that he wanted to get through, but they were trying to stick with the tenor of, yeah, yeah, no.
So yeah, I think those are my, my main things with her. I really hope that my prediction and my fear with that is like she becomes kind of the perfect example of what Portland ultimately ends up electing.
Yeah.
But it's just this completely ineffective, like non-functional person.
Yes, okay.
So a bunch of, yeah, no, no, I, I, yeah, I respect it. Twelve. I mean, there's only one left. It's Angelita Maria. Was she the last, last time too? Was, she hasn't moved?
No.
Okay.
My dislike of her has grown.
Yeah.
Deeply. Uh, oh my God, her war with Janelle Bynum alone. The one side of it, Janelle Bynum doesn't give a shit who she is.
She's just going after her for her votes in Congress.
Yes, and the, the most recent one, which I just did a big Instagram reel on, um, she and the Portland Mercury and the DSA condemned Janelle Bynum for uh, voting yes on a House resolution. They categorized it as, uh, among other things, it celebrated the work of ICE.
Okay. Somehow supported ICE.
So the among other things, carrying all the weight, what the resolution was is it condemned the public killing of Jews in the United States of America for political reasons. The first several points go through exactly what it condemns, why it condemns it, that all people have a right to feel safe. This is the most
It all comes down to them being like pro Palestine.
Well.
Is that what you're saying?
No, it's, it's, they don't, they don't give a shit about Jews and they hate ICE. But in, in one of the little bits of the resolution, it said, and we, you know, commend all of our law enforcement partners that have tried to help prevent this and they list them all and ICE is on the list. And they took away from that, oh, so they think ICE is doing good work. Yes, because ICE in this particular instance is trying to prevent foreign terrorists from killing Jews.
Yeah.
That
So they see this action against anti, antisemitism as, they see that and they go, well, ICE is involved.
Yeah, it's a smokescreen to praise ICE, but they don't, it, it's bullshit. They just want to dunk on Janelle Bynum because this has been Mario's whole thing. Mario is not a Democrat. She hates the Democrat Party. I have plenty of criticisms of the Democratic Party. But Mario is this new, hot fiery, young cohort that want to come in and they, they want to take over the Democratic Party because they want to show you that the Democratic Party, I mean, they're just fascist enablers. They're bending the knee to fascism and this country will die and democracy will die because the Democrats are too cowardly. And so we have to primary all of them. We have to oust all of them.
You know what's interesting? Cause I see that pattern. That's how Steve got into, I mean, that's how he lost his prime, Jeff Merkley. That's how he got into city council initiative. It was like you come in from the left of the left.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And you just go, you're not left enough and
Yes.
That's kind of what she's doing.
Yes, but on her way to do it, she's erasing murder and political violence and antisemitism. She doesn't care about any of these things. She just cares about her political career and her weird war against Democrats that are to the right of her. Oh, she's a gross, gross person. Her ideas are, are deeply stupid and, you know, the DSA are police abolitionists, but she's the one that you can pull clip after clip, after clip, after clip. There is no reality in which she thinks like most of the things that we uh, take up as core services for the city should exist, right? She's the epitome of the get rid of the private rentals, get like I, she won't survive this next election. I'm
You don't think
I know, I, she's too crazy, but while like she's going to kick and thrash and do damage and create as much ugliness as possible. And pretend that like any day now, the Trump administration is going to come black bag her and sell her into slavery in El Salvador or whatever the hell she said. She has
Since November last year, that's what I was thinking, like her, you know, and it sounds funny to say, but her dream is to like, yeah, be arrested or something and that as a springboard to whatever else she wants to do. Like that would make her day.
Yes.
You know, she's literally saying this week, people are, people like, who look like me are getting locked up all the time and well, it's like, we're in Portland.
Also, girl. Pretty white girl, but that's, yeah, it's fine.
Just, that's her whole playbook of like, you know that that's not happening here.
Yeah, we've
You're in a very protected blue
Yeah.
Fortress.
And there, and there, and to, to be, to be fair, there are two or three people in Portland who have been arrested by ICE. Um, although, you know, again, through no, no collusion or no cooperation.
Compared nationally too, it's like a handful of people compared to what you're seeing in California and all this stuff. So I just find it, it's interesting how her a lot of her arguments get undercut. Like she would love, like I said, to see this stuff explode.
So this is it. So this weekend, we've got the No Kings March. We have these ICE protests and you have got the city uh, council president, Alana Pirtleguinny, you've got the Jessica Vega Peterson, you've got chief of police, you've got the mayor, you've got everybody coming forward. This press conference where they say, listen, and you know, they soft pedaled it, so I'll just tell it straight. ICE is hitting people in blue cities and they are hitting people in blue cities. I believe trying to trigger these mass protests like you're seeing in Philly and LA, they want that. They don't want that so that they can tamp down on it. They want that as a fire that they can sort of, you know, cover and then releasing. You sort of modulate the oxygen on because, I mean, this gives like the group in power, the Trump administration, like this is a perfect campaign ad for them.
I mean, that, to me, that was pretty much everyone's takeaway from California so far is like, this is right into, plays right into the hands of everyone on
Yes, and when you're setting shit on
None of the Democrats have learned anything.
Yes. So what we're hearing from more sensible Democrats, more sensible leftists is march, protest, have your voice heard. Don't like everything they want. And this is something you saw from Alana Pirtleguinny. What, like first week in office, she was asked at that town hall, what are you going to do to protect immigrants in Portland? And her answer was, we already are doing everything. It's a sanctuary city in a sanctuary state. We have sanctuary policies at city council. Every law, we're, we're, we're buttoned up. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to keep my head down and not be a giant beacon to attract a lot of federal attention. And then you've got Angelita Mario over here going, I want to be the biggest beacon that has ever been built. I want to bring the hammer down on this city because that's the only way we're going to overthrow the fascist regime.
Yeah, she, it's almost like, yeah, she wants to pick the federal battle, even though that's not her role.
No, and it's a terrible and destructive idea. So like, if we're just talking like dangerous for Portland, absolutely should be recalled yesterday. I'm still sticking it unbelievably bad decision, District Three. Unbelievably bad decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and, 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 and a last moment, it's like she, she has not gotten caught on social media or in public saying any of the like violent antisemitic things. That's for her followers to say. But I mean, again, like it, it's pretty easy for me to pepper you with screenshots of her fault. And I don't mean just people who follow her on social media. You can't control who follows you on social media. I'm talking about the people that she interacts with every day. These, these are people she's very friendly with, saying actually like, I don't think that resolution should have passed anyway, because like Zionists fearing for their lives is like a net good for society.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to make it clear in this one again, too, that like, I, I almost want to do a whole episode about it, but just that, like not only have you convinced me, but just all my research and stuff of like, the DSA is absolutely just openly antisemitic. It's, it's really scary and disgusting.
When you've got a hyper progressive like Sarah Silverman, you know, leaving your group because she's like, I can't ally with people who want to kill me. And I'm like, and I like Sarah Silverman, but like you're not going to get more of like a squishy, hyper progressive liberal, like Hollywood coastal elite. All this stereotype, like she's, she's the poster child for, I said some edgy jokes when I was younger and now all I care about is DEI and she's leaving your party because she's like, you guys don't think literally want to kill me. It's a bad sign.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's almost surprising that she wasn't like involved with it before she was inducted or whatever with that weird
Yeah.
Ceremony, but um, uh, okay, yeah, my last is Candace.
Yeah, okay.
These last three for me are always really hard, but I, I just, like a lot of what you said earlier, I totally agree with. Like she just doesn't. I was going to make a, a compilation of, because you were saying like, she doesn't really like have the endurance or she doesn't. To me, it seems like she doesn't want to be there and I was going to make a compilation, because a lot of times when they come to her turn, she just sighs. She goes like
Yeah.
And I'm like, I'm sorry to be foul about it, but I'm like, bitch, do you want to be there? Like, what's going on here? And it just seems like sometimes she's frustrated with her own system that she helped craft.
Oh, I think she's very frustrated with her own system. I don't think it works the way she wanted it to work.
And that could be true. I don't know. It just overall, the overall vibe I get is, is that she doesn't even want to be involved with like what's going on. And it's like, wasn't this your whole thing? Like, didn't you want to, you created this to basically get yourself in here and um, there were a couple of little things that uh, I wrote down here that I was going to clip in that she, so the whole sobering center and her going for fora health, this debate that her and Eric kind of had.
Yeah.
She clearly did and Eric called her out on this. She mixed up detox and sobering center. Like she, she was thinking like long-term treatment was the same thing as what Eric was asking for. And to me, that's like, says volumes about not only her understanding of Portland history, but addiction, that pipeline, how that continuum works. And just like, because to me cheers was such a big moniker of that. And Eric is old enough to know that when cheers was here, we had a sobering center when cheers was here. But it's like, they don't even know. They haven't even been around long enough to know that, first of all, what that was.
Yeah.
And second of all, that we don't have one anymore. There is no sobering center. She kept saying like, we got him, we got him all over. She was talking about long-term
Long-term treatment, yeah, no, we have nothing there. Listen, this is, this is why the guy who is out of his mind wandering in the intersection near your house is left to wander the intersection near your house because he isn't currently committing a substantial enough crime, you know? He's just
There's nobody to put somebody like that if you're just high and like you're doing stuff that's probably dangerous.
Yes. And this is, I mean, I I will see somebody out in front of my business, the business of a friend. You can tell somebody they're coming up off a depressant. Right? They're getting, you can see them starting to wind up and they start with a little bit of swaying and then they start having an argument with the sky. And then suddenly the Willamette Week box is thrown into the middle of the intersection. And again, you're like, this is only getting, this is escalating. This is, there is, there's nowhere to take that guy.
Yeah.
There's nowhere for police to come and be like, we're going to take you to a sobering center because we think that you are probably going to light, light a dumpster on fire any minute now. You're playing with a lighter, you're gathering, like the number of times I've called police and fire for a guy who was piling newspaper under something and trying to start little fires, clearly getting wound up, clearly just, just out of their mind on something. Yeah, there's nowhere to take them.
Yeah, that, that just seems like a pattern with her of like, kind of, I don't know if misdiagnosing is the right word, but like she just doesn't, she's not really hitting what the problem is. I think she confuses like problems a lot and she kind of bases her whole thing around slogans. And like I mentioned earlier, the tax the rich thing. You know, it, it's almost like she's deploying stuff that would work in a social feed in real life and it just kind of falls flat and like
Yeah.
When you start, when you ask a basic question to poke a hole in it, it just completely falls apart with any of this stuff that she'll bring up and because there's nothing behind it. Um,
That's it. There's not, there's not much there.
Yeah.
Other than, so to your point, it's like she's a, she is an expert in like compassion. You know what I mean? But like, that's not sufficient. It's not sufficient.
Policy.
It's one of the ingredients to It's one of the ingredients to an effective policy. Sure. It's an ingredient, but like you need a lot more substance. Yeah.
And there's just so many things I could not, I, I posted a lot about here. She hired a hundred thousand dollar person to do TikTok videos.
Oh, just back to Loretta Smith's like, I have a staff full of.
Yeah.
People getting paid a hundred and some odd thousand. Yeah.
I was gonna ask you to explain. I, I just wanted to know more about her, cause I was looking at the charter rules a couple of weeks ago and. Like, I just wanna know more about you, cause you mentioned it last time, if she moved to D1. First of all, from where?
That I don't know. I don't remember where she was living before, or I've never properly found out. But, and, and okay, this is like a tricky thing about the council, something I really like about the councils that we don't know a lot about their personal lives. Like it was a long time before I knew that Alana Pertle-Ginni had a wife. And I'm gonna go out of my way to never learn her wife's name. Cause I actually like really like that we, you know, so like.
But I'm just.
Oh, yeah.
Cause the reason I was reading the rule, there's a rule that you have to be there for a year.
And she's, she certainly.
I'm sure she knows.
She certainly was. And, and I guess that's what, yeah, I'm not trying to say that we're like tiptoeing up to doxing. I guess I mean like the, as the double edged sword is like, on the one hand. We learn very little about people's families, which I really like. But on the other hand, it does sort of provide a little bit of shadowy cover. So you know, for Angelita Mario to talk about how safe she feels on the bus. I know where Angelita Mario lives. That's a short bus ride and it's a real safe frequent service bus. And that's the most I'll say on that, but like, she ain't hopping on the max to make it downtown. From the numbers.
Quite a different journey.
It's a cushy bus ride she's on and whatever. But so to this point, yeah, I don't think a lot of people know that, yeah, Candace Avalos purchased a. Oh, I think it's a duplex. Um, so she's a landlord. And uh, yeah, she, she moved into a district after that, like trouncing. That she received the first time she ran for office.
In the previous.
In the previous.
Election system.
Yeah. Uh, and you know, so she could run in the lowest turnout district and she, because, cause you start, I've crunched the numbers, I'm running. I know I need eight thousand votes. She knew that she probably needed less than eight thousand. Right? Like you, you crunch the numbers and you figure out a strategy that works. And yeah, I think she gamed that strategy. I also think that she moved into that district before everything was finalized. So I mean, she like.
Yeah, that's.
It's a little bit of an insider trading.
About it, cause the rule, the way the chart is written is just very specific and it's, it almost says like, if you didn't live there in a year in advance. And they kinda put language in or like up to the, it's starting at the twenty twenty-four election. So I don't know if she got around that, but it's just like. The language is very clear that it almost says like, you will be ejected from council if you didn't follow this rule.
Yeah.
And I agree with that. And I also think that, I've said this on other shows, I just feel like her. Moving in there in advance is kind of just working around that. And I question how much he actually represents that community. That's why I'm asking about it. It's like. Are you actually representing people? Like I've seen videos of her at town halls and people are pretty upset and they're not getting the answers they want from her and.
That's it, right? She moved somewhere where she, she helped set the charter up. And then she moved to a place where she knew that she would only need to represent, again. Seven point five to 10% of registered voters. That's, that's who all, the only people she needs to appeal to. And that's a problem. Like I did my whole little spiel a while back on, you know, if you stack her numbers and Dunphy's numbers together. You get 20% if you're being generous. And 20% of District Four residents, that's the number of residents on that poll. That wanted to cut police funding. But you got 66% of the D1 counselors representing 20% of the district. And we can say pretty, well, we're guessing. I don't want Mitch Green mad at me. I'm guessing about numbers here. That if the things you're arguing for really match up with the same percentage of your constituents who agree with you. We can pretty comfortably say like, they do probably only represent 20% of that district together. So that's, I don't think she did anything illegal.
It wasn't a straight up, yeah, violation.
I don't think she violated any rules. I think we've just gotta ask like.
Well, that, that's what I was kinda trying to say is like, I don't, to me, I, I agree that she probably didn't, but it just seems so. Unrepresentative to be like.
That's, that's it.
You moved here from some, who knows where else? And at what point? That's why I was trying to find like, I don't know when she did that. Cause to me, it's like, if you need to be really rooted in your community, going back to Dan, that number one, it's like, he's been there. He grew up here. He, he did live in Scappus in New York for a little bit, but he is like Portland to the core.
Yeah.
And if you're gaming the system to just come in and be like, I represent these people and they're looking at you like, what? Like.
I mean, listen.
It just seems a little disingenuous.
I've been here 20 years and I still, when I go make my pitch to West Portlanders. I'm gonna have still a bit of feeling of like, do I really have?
Yeah, sure.
The, the, and it, that's 20 years. Surely I can speak for them, right? But I still feel this like, hell yeah, but Olivia Clark's been here. Like, you know, like there's people that have been here longer. There are people that are more invested. That are better representative of that group. And it does seem like, yeah, there's just a, an, a lack of acknowledgement of that. But, but I think to, to your point, it's, it's, it's also just the optics of how it looks and feels. There's a conflict of interest, right? Whether it's legally a conflict, there's a conflict of interest with her helping set up the charter and then running. There's a bad optics of her moving into the lowest turnout district to boost her odds. There's a real gerrymandering look to how the districts are shaped with District Four being a very weird shape. There, there's just, it's kinda back to my like Loretta Smith children's levy thing. I don't think Loretta Smith's like committing a crime with the children's levy thing. It just smells bad and it looks bad to me.
It's a lot of odd things going on.
It makes me not feel good or confident. Yeah.
I was gonna say one other thing about, she, they had a little um. Tit for tat, I don't know if that's the right word.
Mayor, we've been working on this for a month. Hearing this as a surprise on the dais, I don't appreciate that.
Candace and the mayor had a little thing and I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but they. They, she kind of, they called each other out. I mean, I wouldn't say that Keith directly did that, but it was again about the sobering center.
Yeah, okay, I saw that.
And he was like, look, look, the county chair came to me like yesterday and is asking for this and we think it's a good idea and.
Yes.
That turned into Candace and Loretta both saying like, you disrespected her and turned your back on her and all this stuff. And, and I just think that it's, I don't know if I'd call that also tone policing, but I don't think that that stuff's helpful and. It almost gets into this bigger conversation with me, like um, you know, you were talking about Mitch earlier. Pressuring to drop like criminal charges on people. And I think there's a real conversation that needs to be had and it's kind of happened in these meetings about. The executive versus the legislative.
Yeah.
Things. And I would almost argue that the counselors are trying to get into the bureaus in ways that they shouldn't.
Okay, so yes.
And I know a lot of opinions are on the opposite side of that, but I see like that, what you're saying of like. So now they wanna kinda pressure the police into who they should charge, or I guess the county DA or whoever.
Yes, they, they wanna.
And that's like, that's exactly what you shouldn't be doing.
Yes, they want.
You're not there to tell the bureaus what to do. You're there to craft policy.
Yep. Uh, budget note on um, the wellness, well, welfare checks, right? Yep, those Novick Cand, Candace Avalos's fifteen million dollar overtime, approximately fifteen million dollar overtime cut. We want to approve your overtime. We, we need a little bit, we need a little bit more control over you. And then we wanna put a budget note that you have to do this internal study and we wanna put, put a budget note that you, and you know, you saw Dan Ryan pushed back on, again, back to Dan. He pushed back on that stuff a lot. He was like, I thought that we weren't micromanaging. I thought that we weren't controlling bureaus anymore. This tastes like that, it smells like that.
It's an interesting line. Then I, I, I think about it a lot because it's like, I get it. Like you're there to craft policy and tell, you know, basically tell these bureaus how to operate. But it's, I think they're getting way closer to the line of dictating this small behavior. I guess you call it micromanaging, but like. It's an interesting conversation I think needs to be had. And I think that the counselors are posturing it in a way. That's counter to that. And it should really be on them to be like, look, you guys, keep, keep your fingers out of these bureaus at that level.
Yes, this is back to, is the Portland voter getting what they voted for? They thought, I'm. I go on this tear too often, but there was a poll, exit poll, Portlanders who voted, did you understand? Rank choice voting and Portlanders voted for themselves at a really high rate that they did understand. But then every single client that I have spoken to, and I've been like, explain rank choice and single transfer vote to me. They explain it to me and I go. I am so sorry to inform you that that is incorrect. No, nobody got it right. And this is that we thought, you know, we thought ranked choice voting worked like this. Maybe because it was poorly communicated. We thought the mayor had a tie breaking vote. Well, maybe it doesn't like. We thought that bureaus were gonna be cut off from the counselors and this was gonna be a legislative body and the little fiefdoms. Well, you know, Candace Avalos doesn't really seem like super stoked about that. She kinda wants to get her hand back in the pie. There's all these things that just aren't what Portlanders were sold.
In a way, it's almost like they want both. They want like the old bureau control and they want to legislate.
They, they sold you on not having a council that was too powerful. And then they got elected on a promise of a council that wasn't too powerful. And now they're like, you know what I would like? Some power.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I wanted to say something, I don't know if people probably don't care that much, but I said something on an earlier episode, a couple of episodes ago that I thought. This new system like takes away a lot of power from the mayor. And what I meant by that is what we're talking about. Like he, he basically has no, in a policy world, has nothing, you know? They even fucking snapped at him in this last one for commenting. I don't know if you saw that, maybe I'll clip it in here, but. They were questioning, can they, can he talk right now? Like they're talking about some amendment. And I'm sitting there going, he's the fucking mayor of the city, you guys. Like he's there for a reason. He can talk.
He is a part, yeah, I know he's not, no longer a part of the council, but like, come on.
It's, and I don't know, it just, anyway, I was gonna just clear that up for people. What I meant by that was he has basically no. Policy control as to me, as we've seen clearly through this whole thing. And I guess we'll see once we're past this budget season, how he kinda operates the bureaus since that's kinda his thing, but.
We'll see.
It just, for me, my initial take is like, yeah, he just doesn't really have. As much power, cause people always say it's a strong mayor system. And, and maybe that's partially his fault of like, you know, I've. Been saying recently, he needs to be louder and he needs to be a little bit more vocal about some of this stuff. Just in an optics way of like using a megaphone.
Yeah, he's a, he's a.
Cause he is a very polite guy and he's very timid sometimes.
He, he strikes me as the type of manager who, if I'm just gonna guess at what's going on in his head. He's gonna try to get consensus first. When consensus fails, he will go to a democratic vote. And then, and this is where I may be wrong, but I think that this is true. If he doesn't get that vote that he wanted. Well, I'll just figure out a different way to do it. And that's kinda what he's done with some of the homeless services stuff. He's like, I want you on board with me. When I pitched this to the state, when they pitched this to Metro, but if you're not on board with me, I'm still gonna pitch it to the state. I'm still gonna pitch it to Metro.
He's gonna find a way to.
I'll find funding outside you because all you do is control the purse. You don't control me. And he said that in a very nice way. And I think we're seeing that a bit. I think people should pay attention to who this week said, especially over the fora thing and something like. I have been committed to backing the mayor's plan and I'm not gonna back out right now. And the DSA is not, the DSA is against the mayor's plan. They're very clearly against it. So if the mayor's plan works, I don't know that it will. I really hope that it does. If it works, it will be, that will be a big campaign ad for people.
Well, it, it is interesting how it's become, I've talked a lot about recently, how people. Have been coming out more in opposition to his congregate shelter. And I think that lines up completely with the DSA's agenda of like. They just want, they want projects, basically. They just want long-term housing that's gonna take decades to build and.
Sure.
Hand that out to anyone who wants it.
Well, and they wanna buy up a bunch of housing that exists and then just place people in it.
Yeah.
And figure out how to pay for that later. Well, I mean, they know how we'll pay for it, cause they keep saying it. We'll tax the rich.
Yeah. More taxes, yeah.
The final, like just a, a, a last point on the DSA, I wanna make sure, I, I would like everybody, even though they'll get the clicks and I don't want them to get the clicks. Go find that Mercury's puff piece on the Portland DSA.
Okay, it's just on them in general.
Yes, it is on the rise of the Portland DSA. Read that puff piece. It's enormous. It's probably the longest thing the Mercury's ever written. Except for that recent blackout issue. Uh, it is. It's, it's perfect because it's insane. They just come out and they, it's an ad for the DSA, but they come out and say, they're like, hey, if you're wealthy. We're coming for you. And I, we don't need to be shy about that. There's no reason for us to be shy. We have a power block. Uh, you know, hold on, we're on our way. We're coming for that money. And. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're all about, you know?
I, I like that they say it out loud. I'm, I'm gonna be using a lot of, of probably clips from, from that. Uh, it, it's, it's wild. Uh, it's absolutely wild, but at this point, the Mercury is just functionally the.
Yeah.
The DSA's newspaper.
I can't tell you honestly, the last time I've read the Mercury.
I feel bad asking people to read the Mercury. It's a rag, but um, but yeah, uh.
It, it, it's hard for me to even do. It's funny, cause all, people knock on the Oregonian and I'm like, also read it like, you know, but a lot of people, especially online are just like. It's like a communist rag and all this stuff. And I'm like, what else are you gonna, there's no other game in town.
Yeah, well, Willamette Week and the Oregonian are doing a totally passable job. We have journalists who are doing good work here.
And then we have the Portland Mercury. There may only be five really good reporters, but like, they're doing good work.
Fair, yeah, for over 500,000 people. Yeah, it's not a good, not so good, but yeah, no, uh, that, that, that ad for the, for the DSA and the Mercury, that multi-page ad. Is um, it's nice there being so honest.
Just open about it.
Just very open.
Yeah, you made me think, I was gonna shout out, you know, I don't know, this might be a hot take, but like. First of all, I just wanted to shout out everyone who testified or submitted testimony and all that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, you know, Terrence did great on that, on that final day. Um, I just wanted to say like, like, I think that stuff is important. You know, I've asked counselors about this, about how they weigh that stuff. But what I wanted to say, I think that stuff is important, but I also think what's really important is stuff like the Oregon, Oregon editorial.
Yeah.
The Blazers, um, all of this kinda media, real pressure, even the chamber. That's the kinda stuff to me that really gets to these people.
Yeah.
And makes them reconsider or makes these votes peter out and fail.
Yeah.
I do think it's a combination of that and testimony, but I just, I just wanted to say that, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I don't.
It's pressure from wherever it can come from. And honestly, sometimes the more institutional, the more damage that's gonna do as far as. Defeating amendments or something.
I love all of my neighbors who go to testify regularly. Dutch Bros leaving the state is gonna, is gonna hit harder, right?
Yeah.
But in, there was a meeting in South Waterfront a couple of weeks ago where it wasn't Dutch Bros, it was a couple of Portland companies and I won't name them. Because I'm trying to flirt with all of them to stay. Uh, but there were a number of big, well-respected, very well-loved Portland institutions. That were turning to our, you know, state Congress members and saying. You gotta give me a reason not to leave this state, cause I'm out of patience.
Yeah, that, that number of that size company is getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah. And, and yeah, and we're not talking about, you know, powels, right? We're talking about those medium sized companies.
People with several hundred employees.
Yeah, or in some cases even just several dozen. Oh, no, I mean even several, but like, but like iconic, you know, tourist attractions. Things that we think of as Portland staples that we are not interested in losing. Good, good paying jobs, companies you don't want moving to Dutch Bros is moving to Arizona. You know, we're, we're just, if you don't want more haircuts for. Children's Hunger Services, which I think we can kind of all agree is like a really, really great program. We wanna have the money to fund. You don't want us to close down a bunch of parks. If you don't, the solution is not taxing the rich, tax the rich. We're running out of the rich. And they will always redefine the rich down.
Yeah.
The rich has become a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so they're all rich. I'm not rich.
Yeah.
Uh, but if all of my rich neighbors who just make middle class incomes move. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the do, that's the doom loop.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, I don't know, let's say they always reverse that into the boom loop and I don't know, for me, that kinda falls into the uncrease.
Oh, yeah.
Category of like.
I'm sick of the conversation, but I just, it's, uh, the reason I want people to read that Mercury puff piece is. It is the DSA saying out loud, doom loop, bring it on. Let's, let's do it.
Yeah.
You know, they're, yeah.
They're all on board for that stuff. Yeah. And it's surprising to see, like, um. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if we're saying, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm uh. Like, I don't care as much about these little budget notes that turn into studies, like for example, the studying the delivery fee or.
Public housing.
Yeah, um. But my understanding, and I've heard this from people, you know, who know a lot about the city and stuff, but that, those basically. It, it, it's laying the foundation for policy that they're gonna push, you know, and Samir is probably gonna try that later. They have a whole debate in that meeting about. Whether he's gonna float that later this year. And he kept saying, wow, I just wanna leave it in there just as, but that's, to me, that's what's going on with those. I don't worry about them because they're not imminent, but, but I just wanted to say that, that is the pipeline of.
Golf fees. I forgot about golf fees and this is a perfect example. This is why I don't agree with Eric when he says like, hey, if you, if you don't want more information, there's something wrong with your equation. Eric and I disagree on this. I would strike that stuff down. Golf fees. I hate golf. Golf in most places the country is a wealthy, white people sport, right? It's not here because we kinda socialized golf. Actually, we, we have public available courses.
System, yeah.
And these courses are self, and they're self-sustaining. They're self-sustaining because people in Portland like golf. They're making golf available to a wider variety of people. Who for some insane reason want to play golf. And if you wanna play golf, you should play golf. Uh, golf is becoming more diverse economically, racially, all the things. This is all. Uh, golf is becoming more diverse economically, racially, all the things. This is all the like good squishy progressive Portland stuff that's happening. The golf system became totally self-sufficient. And what did we do?
Took all that money.
We raised the fees, which would not, we're not charging wealthy people, right? They use this rhetorical trick of like, well, golf, that's just rich people. Not in Portland. It's not. It's actually normal people. Uh, we raised the fees to those normal people. And then we poached those fees to go pay for other unsustainable parts of parks is what we're doing with it. And so this is it. We're just exploring ideas. And then we go, hey, you've done something really successful over here. You've commit, you've created a public service that's self-sustaining. Let's punish you for that. And let's punish the users of your service for that. Let's use them as a piggy bank that we can raid. Uh, for this other department that's doing a terrible job managing itself. And that's where you leave that Scandinavian adorable socialism into just full-on communism, where the hard workers are just ground down by like the failing. You need to gut that system if it's failing. The golf fees were offensive. I was glad that, you know, some of our sane counselors voted against it. I, this was green, right? This was green in the golf fees.
Yeah.
I just, oh, look, something's actually working in this city. Let's mess with it. Let's mess with it immediately.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Yeah. There's a, you made me think of too. I wanted to say about PSF. I see the same thing there. Like I, I still don't understand why parks couldn't, backfill with a lot of PSF money. And I know,
Black.
But it's like, guys, just use the money for something.
No, they just got to invoke that it's supposed to be for black people and nobody cares that that's not true. And nobody cares that most black Portlanders are probably like, backfill the parks. Like, you know who likes parks? Everybody. Everybody of every color. But yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter.
All right, man. We has been a long one here. I think I'm, I think, I think my camera is, this one may be the only one going still. I hit the limit, I think on these, but it was just a few minutes ago, but yeah. Thanks for doing this again. We'll do another one. Uh, I'm going to try to do one every quarter. So we'll do.
Yeah, we'll do a quarterly thing. Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.